The Simsbury Zoning Commission meeting. I'm going to call it to order right now at seven o'clock. Now, the first thing we need to do tonight, as is common, is to review minutes of the last meeting. The last meeting being, well, January 3rd. So, for my colleagues, has everyone had an opportunity to read these?
Your mic is not on.
It's not on? Okay. Let me try to get it a little closer. So, the minutes for January 3rd, has everybody had an opportunity to read these? Any comments, corrections?
Yeah.
Tony, why don't you go?
Line 20, that should be special meeting, not regular meeting. Line 107, after 4%, we should add increase. And line 134, after 987,602, we should add an additional tax revenue. And I would ask George, if you could look at lines 142 to 143, those don't seem clear That's all I had. That's all I had.
George, you can take our mic. You know, it's not the mic.
If you want. Anybody else? Comments, corrections, additions? Well, I came to us in a letter. On line 217, there's a sort of phrase or sentence missing there that says, it should say, "She requested that Commissioner Salz recuse himself." And that was missed in the transcript here. And then on line 218, the first word is H-O-W, it should be W-H-O-W. And both of those were pointed out by letter today for the recalcitrant with the remarks.
If you leave that, please feedback.
Maybe it's fixed. So, any other comments, corrections? Then I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes as with those corrections. Anybody willing?
Is that moved?
Thank you. And a second, please. Thanks, Your Honor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay.
You have a regular member not in attendance?
Oh, I forgot to do the attendance. So, the motion took up the minutes passed, and we'll move back up the hill a little bit here. In terms of attendance, who's missing here? Diane Madigan is missing. So, I know you haven't filled in yet, Jackie, so why don't you sit for Diane tonight?
Okay.
The next item of business is a site plan request, a site plan approval request from some folks doing an accessory dwelling unit on their house. Are the doors, Richard or Esther, here tonight? Richard, how'd you like to come up to the podium? Good evening. Could you just repeat your name and address for the microphone?
My name is Richard Durr. I'm here with my wife, Esther Durr. We live at 76 Hedgehog Lane in Wissensbury, Connecticut.
Terrific. And we all have copies of your application. And I wondered if you could just kind of walk us through what you're trying to do here. This is a pretty informal process, and we're not going to ask any trick questions, but we do need to kind of establish a record, so.
For the record, I'm requesting or requesting a site plan amendment for an attached dwelling, approximately 600 square feet, and finished living space above our attached garage, to be used for living space for my 96-year-old father, Monroe. It's pretty straightforward, as you said. You have, I think, a floor plan there that was put together with the application.
Yeah.
It has its own dedicated parking space, which is visible from your aerial view, which I think that's also part of the application. And I think that you also have a picture of the entrance to this separate area, which is attached, but still separated in a way. And I'm not sure what else you would like me to add.
Just a simple question.
Sure.
I'm curious about the 600 square feet. And if that really does, if that meets your needs, or you're eligible for a larger space, and I suspect you might know that.
Yeah, I think that the 600 is kind of a good number.
Okay.
Because, of course, it is attached to the house, so on one side, you'll see there's kind of a large extra living space, which is what we call that, like our bonus room.
Uh-huh.
So, you know, we'll go up there with the grandkids or the kids, and we use that space as part of our house. It's the other, you know, back section of the space that we're going to dedicate to the 600 square feet, basically.
The drawing of the space is very, very well done.
Oh, thank you.
Was that do-it-yourself drawing?
Well, it's a combination. It's a family effort, basically, pretty much from the beginning.
Sometimes they're a little, you know, skimpy on the details on these drawings, but this is very.
Related to architects.
Oh, there you go.
Right, exactly. My son's an architect, I'm in the business, and so this is kind of, you know, this looks like a kind of a rough drawing to me, but that's okay, if you're okay with that.
Well, it's a pretty low bar that we're working for here, generally, you know, on these particular applications. Let me just do this. We have some very specific conditions that we need to just be certain or clear that you have met here. And the first is, the owner of record must reside in either the accessory dwelling unit or the primary dwelling unit. An affidavit alleging, acknowledging the residency is required from the property owner and is included in the application material. I could see that's here. We have the.
Yeah, that's correct. We reside in the residence.
Yeah. And then, "The area devoted to the ADU shall be up to 600 square feet, or 30% of the gross floor area of the primary dwelling unit, whichever is greater thereto." I could see that 600 square feet is, it's not 30% of your home.
It's less.
It's far less, yeah. Okay. So, that's all set. And then, "Only one accessory dwelling unit is permitted for each lot." You've only requested one, so I think we're set there, too.
That's all we're interested in.
Right. "The primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit shall comply with building, health, and fire prevention codes." So, you're all set there, too?
Yes, everything is up to code and done properly.
So, "Any secondary entrance is incorporated into the principal residence shall reflect the architectural style of the single-family unit." It doesn't seem to me you're adding any.
Not really, just, that's why I have that one picture, just to let you know that everything that has been done is in keeping with the structure.
Yeah, the photographs were very helpful. Just two more points. No additional driveway curb cuts can be created for a primary purpose of serving the accessory dwelling unit. And the application does not propose an additional curb cut.
That's correct. We're going to keep the driveway the way it is.
Okay. And "There must be at least one off-street parking space with a proper solid surface dedicated to the accessory dwelling unit." The applicant has adequate parking. This is a note from staff member, that you have adequate parking in the garage and driveway to meet the parking requirement for the ADU. So, I think on those conditions that are the critical seven, you're all set.
We have, yes.
Let me just see. Per Section 352A of the Simsbury zoning regulations, accessory dwelling units, in your case, an attached accessory dwelling unit, one accessory dwelling unit within the footprint of the primary structure may be permitted by site plan. So, we have the site plan. The application meets the applicable standards in Section 11, Site Plan Requirements located in the zoning regulations. Parking on sites is adequate. Once approved, the project will require a permit from the Building Division and from the Farmington Valley Health District.
As I understand, yes.
Okay. So, I asked the members, anybody have questions or comments for Mr. Durr?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Do you have the draft motion over there that you could just read?
I do.
Please read it.
Moved, the zoning commission approves application ZC 23-43 of Esther and Richard Durr, applicant and record owner for zoning commission's site plan approval to permit a plus or minus 600-square-foot attached accessory dwelling unit at 76 Hedgehog Lane, assessors map B08, block 203, lot 005, zone R160. The commission finds that the application for the site plan has met the standards set in Section 3.5 and the site plan criteria in Section 11, and is subject to the following conditions. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction.
Could we have a second? Somebody to second that motion? Thank you, Kate. So, Kate's the second. Any further discussion? Comments? Then we'll vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Mr. Durr, you're all set.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Thank you, members.
You have a good night. The first public hearing is, relates to a matter that was raised by the zoning commission, but it has to do with application 23-36 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission, and the rest of the notice kind of thing is, for a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations pursuant to Sections 4.5, 5.5, and 17.4, and the establishment of a new Section 8.7 to allow mobile food vendors as an accessory use in business, industrial, professional office, and planned area development districts. This item's been continued from the meeting on November 20th, 2023. It was a regular meeting. So, our plan tonight is to take whatever time we need to for public input on this particular matter. And what we want to do is sort of the regular format, that anybody who wants to make comments on the food truck text amendment can do so by coming to the podium. And what we like to do is have people just sort of, in an informal but orderly way, just, if you want to speak, just make your way up to the front here, and for the next person ideally to be ready as each person finishes. We ask you to speak directly into the mic and to start by reciting your name and your address, and then whatever points you want to share, you're all set. So, that, our plan tonight, just to jump ahead here a moment, is to hear the public input portion of this process, but we're not going to make the time available tonight for the discussion and action by the commission members. We're going to schedule that for a little bit further out. It's going to come up again on the 21st of February. We have a very, we expect to, we need to allow time for a lengthy, a second public hearing tonight, and so we need to divide the food truck text amendment into two nights, so tonight and then the 21st. So, if anyone who would like to start the comments, please feel free to come up and stand up close to the mic, Joan, I know you're well aware how to do this, so, please.
Joan Cope, 26 Wickham Drive. Over the years, there's been an increase in food trucks that now require more regulations. These regulations should be fair and equitable to all. Spot zoning is illegal. This should not be changed. Food trucks are beneficial to the community with oversight and permits. There should be designated area for food trucks. Events, athletic activities, athletic fields, and businesses and schools should be allowed to have non-permanent food trucks. Restaurants should be allowed to have food trucks, but must comply with the zoning regulations. The Health Department should have oversight on all food trucks as part of the permitting process. Food trucks are a beneficial addition to the Simsbury community and should be allowed under strict compliance with the regulations. Thank you.
Steve Antonio, 133 Holcomb Street. I'll keep it short and quick. It's not actually the first public hearing on food trucks. As all of you know, we've met quite a few times for public hearings on food trucks. Many of you might not remember how far back this goes. This goes back to when Mike Lynn was our town planner. It was brought up, is there a potential way we could bring food trucks to town and keep it in an orderly fashion? Mike Lynn worked with Jason Brown from the Health Department. Then they met with the stakeholders. Then we had multiple public discussion, and we came up with that draft that I still don't understand why it was literally discarded without ever being voted on. At this point in time, food trucks are not allowed. As the way I see it, you can move forward in only two manners. One is revert to the vetted proposal that zoning participated, stakeholders participated, the public participated in, and also the Health Department and the town planner participated in. We're beating a dead horse by constantly bringing up food trucks. Either accept the proposal previous to this tweaked-out, you can have anything anywhere proposal, which to me is ludicrous. There were many exceptions in the proposal that was accepted. You can have food trucks anywhere, subject to a number of conditions. We broke out agriculture. We broke out the performing arts center. We broke out private functions. We broke out a food truck anywhere with the singer pair provision. Literally, all this stuff is in that initial draft. If you want to deliberate, that's the draft you should be deliberating on. One last point is, West Hartford has started, just to finish that off, we took all of our input from Colebrook. Colebrook was the town we modeled our food trucks under because we liked the view, not, when I say "we," I mean the town staff, liked the way that they progressed with the food trucks. And if you look at the ordinances in Colebrook, you'll find they're very similar to the original proposal. The other point I did want to make tonight is, West Hartford has taken a different vantage point in as much as they want to do what has been requested by some, to let it be a free-for-all for food trucks. Within the past several months, two brick-and-mortar businesses have closed their business and switched to a food truck vendor program. It's substantially less in many ways. Insurance, rent is probably the biggest thing. We're going to have vacant restaurant spaces if you allow food trucks an unfair competitive advantage in a reduced cost of doing business. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Nielsen, I apologize for my voice. I barely have it. Simsbury Main Street Partnership. I've sent the commission a lengthy email. I've also been before the old commission. Thank you, Stephen, for pointing out a lot of things, so it saves my voice a little bit. What I will say is a couple of things. If you move forward with what we consider this free-for-all, you are unfairly hurting our tax-paying businesses and our tax-paying business property owners. By, people were saying in some, in some of the other public comments, that, well, this food truck would be exclusionary, and that we should just allow any food truck to come in because it allows for people to try different things. And I would tell you that everything we do as a town of Simsbury is to a point exclusionary in that we prioritize our tax-paying residents and our tax-paying businesses. You can't go to Simsbury school system from just anywhere. It is exclusionary to a point. You can't have municipal programs. They don't pick up your trash. They don't plow your roads, because if you're not a Simsbury resident, again, it's exclusionary. What you are doing right now with this proposed text amendment is you are favoring non-taxpaying businesses who provide nothing to the community. And as Stephen mentioned, by doing this, you will see our mom-and-pop businesses. We have over 55 small restaurants that have barely hung on during COVID. Not only did they barely hang on during COVID, they pay rent to our property owners, who then in return pay an exorbitant property tax at the end of the year. And I have property owners that have gone before the Board of Selectment and others to talk about that. They pay insurance. They pay permanent costs. They pay the Health District cost. They work with fire. They do all of their signage, regulations. They pay, they pay taxes on not just their property, but everything they own, every piece of equipment. They provide local employees. They give back to our communities, our school systems, our charities. They also, most of them happen to live in Simsbury, so they're paying residential taxes as well. It is great to try other cuisine. If you want to go and drive in your car and try a new place, that is fantastic. We're not telling you not to do that. What we're telling you is that by allowing out-of-town food trucks, except for, again, I think the commission was really fair when we had that first stakeholders' meeting. We talked about allowing for food trucks at the Performing Arts Center, allowing for food trucks for agri tourism, single parent, et cetera, but not allowing for food trucks like Chick-fil-A and others to park across from Harvest Cafe, who's been in business for decades and is a second generation, or Kevin Farley, who came before your last meeting and said he had to put almost $500,000 back into his business during COVID to help it survive, and everybody else. You will start to see our restaurants close because it will, there will be competition that they cannot, again, there's so much expenses to having a brick-and-mortar location. You will start to see those business, the property owners who I've sent you, Andy and Dre, I've sent you emails from, who's a major property owner in town, and Tom Ryan, who owns Simsbury and Townshops and others, that this will hurt them and their ability to then pay their taxes. This policy, which was not done by stakeholders, which was done by one gentleman, this policy is not good policy. It is not what Simsbury stands for. It is not what small businesses stand for. And you are setting a really dangerous precedent if you move forward with this. We appreciate the work that the commission did on the first draft. We worked really hard, with stakeholder buy-in, and we feel that it not only reflects the growing needs of the community, but it protects our businesses. It protects the quality of life. It protects the tax base that in return pays for all of the municipal services, including things like the building we're standing in. So, I implore you to say no to this free-for-all and go back to the first stakeholder-vetted text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Thomas. That's my address, 42 Bretonwood Drive, Simsbury, Connecticut. I came before the commission before. I'm going to come again and say, you know, I understand, you know, there's a lot of comments that are referencing a prior document. Maybe that prior document should be put out on the, on the server so we can all see it because they're referencing something that a lot of us haven't seen. But on the other hand, you know, there have been a lot of businesses that have survived past COVID, restaurants that have, and even past COVID, as we stand here today, over the last month, the last quarter, we have had restaurants that have closed. Those restaurants have closed for other reasons. And so, I personally, as a resident, like to visit restaurants locally, but I also like difference. And I think Simsbury should be open to difference, and there are things that can be done. If those food trucks are allowed to come in, like Chick-fil-A, which many of us in town like, there can be things that happen, just like when we had the food truck that came and was, and I think this all started because the food truck that was at the historical location. I mean, those food trucks coming in could donate back into the town. I mean, there are things that we could put in the policy or the recommendation that they, they're going to have to pay, you know, a space fee. So, and they're not going to be here for weeks and months at a time. They're coming in for one or two days or two or three days, and if we can allow them to come in for the Performing Arts Center and other venues, then I think we should be able to allow them to come in for businesses that don't have restaurants, that are not restaurants at all.
Excuse me. Name's Nord Christensen, 35 West Mountain Road. I don't have a whole lot to add, but I would like to back up what Stephen and Sarah have said. Those food trucks don't pay any tax dollars into this town. I pay a substantial amount of taxes to the town of Simsbury. We have a couple of restaurants in our plaza, both of which struggled. There was actually one there that did close during COVID, never reopened, put another one in, they're doing okay. Another, the main restaurant in our plaza has struggled from the beginning of COVID and continues to. Anything that hurts existing businesses or restaurants or property owners, I don't think is a good idea. Allowing, yes, that proposal that was put forth before should be out there so everybody can see it. It allows for a wide variety. It allows for the big events. It allows for the personal person to have a food truck come to their property. I think that's a better overall proposal than what's on the table at the moment.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 15 Oakhurst Road. I'm curious who all these stakeholders are that we keep referring to. I'll remind everyone that town governance represents the legal electors of the town. Sometimes those people are also large taxpayers and property owners, and sometimes they're not. I've spoken about this food truck proposal or variations of it before. I don't have skin in this game. I don't have any interests in any businesses that are food-based or other brick-and-mortar retail, office, or commercial spaces. And thanks to Simsbury's, Simsbury's last year's $250 a month tax increase, I don't really have the disposable income to eat out at either restaurants or I don't really have the disposable income to eat out at either restaurants or food trucks. The only reason I'm so passionate about this issue is that it lies at the very heart of local, state, and national governance and how it operates. The day each of you were sworn into office, you took an oath first and foremost to uphold the law. The foundation underlying every single statute in this country is the U.S. Constitution. Beyond that, every Connecticut statute and local ordinance must additionally adhere to the Constitution of the State of Connecticut. Whether any of us agrees or not with those legal documents is immaterial. They are the law with which everything else must comply unless amendments to those constitutions are properly ratified. I have quoted relevant provisions of these documents in previous meetings. Suffice it to say now that adding a restaurant-only provision to this regulation would provide distinct competitive advantages to some business owners and disadvantages to both other business owners and the public, the residents and electors of this town. This would be in direct opposition to the Connecticut Constitution's Equal Protection Clause, Article One, Declaration of Rights, Section One, which I have cited before on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. To approve a text amendment that provides economic protectionism to a small group of a specific type of business owners would violate your sworn oath of office to uphold the law. Allowing food trucks on restaurant properties only would directly advantage restaurants, which they've stated themselves by saying that food trucks put downward pressure on pricing and hurts their business by giving customers choice. That is exactly why the Constitution has that clause. It is not the government's role to support businesses at the expense of consumers by creating rules that limit competition on the marketplace. This discussion has also been incorrectly framed to suggest this is protecting Simsbury businesses against outside businesses, the food trucks. It is in actuality Simsbury Restaurants versus all other Simsbury businesses who aren't food trucks. The other businesses who might invite a food truck onto their property pay property taxes for their buildings and equipment, just as the restaurants do. They contribute to the community and some donate to sports teams or scouts, just as the restaurants do. The food trucks have health and fire department regulations. Adding restaurants to this proposal not only harms consumers by, for example, preventing them from grabbing a sandwich one day a week at Tractor Supply or feeding their family from a truck at the soccer fields on a long day of practices and games, but it also prevents the property owners in Powder Forest Office Complex from accommodating office tenants by having a food truck come in at lunchtime or coffee break so employees don't have to leave work to grab a bite. This is a common practice for office buildings to do. Successful food trucks allowed to park in the lots along Iron Horse with property owner permission may bring in people to town who would then spend money in our other retail stores, like the thrift or hardware stores or gift shops. Food trucks that find a market here for their menu might grow into a local permanent establishment. I do believe food trucks should be allowed in town with some specific provisions for commercial areas that don't inhibit parking or safety, but that don't unlawfully advantage one type of business entity over all others. More concerning to me is that a private dues-paying membership nonprofit organization, Main Street Partnership, to which our tax dollars are donated in the amount of fifty thousand dollars every year by Simsbury Selectmen for the purpose of, quote, "economic development", has spearheaded a lobbying campaign by encouraging their members to write the zoning commission in support of restaurants only to the direct detriment of other Simsbury businesses and residents. That doesn't seem to me like money well spent on economic development. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like just another minute for a quick rebuttal of some of that stuff. The zoning being started off with an accessory use. That's what the food trucks are being proposed as, an accessory use to an existing business. According to that concept of the Constitution, why do we even have a zoning commission or zoning ordinances? Let's get rid of them all. They're unconstitutional to control the zoning within our town. You can't have your cake and eat it too. It, it's as simple as that. Either we have zoning laws or we don't. We are talking about a zoning law. Powder Forest was broken out as well as other complexes. I do wish I,
No, actually.
It's a rebuttal.
Public audience versus another.
Steve, make it quick, please.
I am. I just want to point out, I wish that document was online. I don't know why it's being hidden, but Powder Forest was addressed in it. And it is available somewhere online. Main Street is not a private organization. It just represents business in town. It's supporting the businesses in town. And last but not least, a food truck is only taxable when it is an accessory use to an existing Simsbury business.
Thank you.
Rebuttal, but others don't. Is this a public debate where it's like everybody gets their public audience? Or certain special members of our government gets,
Lori, do you, do you have something you want to add to your remarks?
I, I just wanted to close with that statement about the taxes. The only way that any income goes to the town of Simsbury is if the food truck is owned by a Simsbury resident or business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You're sure? Tom, are you headed up here?
Thomas Sterner, eleven Barnard Drive, Simsbury. I'd like to just point out about the, the southern portion of the development by the Waterman Group. Talcott Mountain South is a large rental.
You're a little early. We're, we're going to be talking about, we haven't moved on yet. We're still talking about food trucks. We're going to get to,
Oh, no, okay, I'm sorry.
We're going to get to the development over on, at two hundred Hart Meadow. A little later, right, yeah. Okay, thank you. We'll be sure to make time for you. Anybody else on the food trucks? Okay. Let me just, in, in terms of a question for the commission members. We have, I'm not sure how many people are around town who didn't make it tonight that have something to say about the food trucks, but we're not going to be hearing, we're not going to be discussing among ourselves and taking action on this item until the second meeting out from tonight. We could leave this topic open, leave the public hearing open until that meeting, or we could close it tonight and then we've sort of settled what's on the record and we can move ahead with the discussion and the decision that night. So I, I asked for some feedback.
I think we should leave it open and I think we should talk to George about having the original draft posted online so everybody can see it and then we can continue this discussion.
Well, okay, first on the question of, you're inclined then to keep the hearing open until we gather again?
Yes.
Okay. And somebody else? Shannon, Kate, was, was that your sentiment also? Okay. Now, anybody down this way, I can't.
Yeah, quick, quick process question on this. So right now, the one in front of us is the, the one that's more permissible? The, that's the proposal in front of us right now as opposed to the,
Yeah, it has a date on it of October second.
Right, and if we went the other direction, we'd have to do what? Another public hearing for the other version?
I don't think you would. No, no, I do not. It, it would, if, if you, if you chose the more restrictive food and beverage restaurants only, it's, it's, it's a choice that is less permissive than what was advertised.
Okay, so that wouldn't be a whole nother public hearing?
No, I don't think you'd need to do that.
Okay, that was just a, then I'm perfectly happy to keep the public hearing open.
I, I certainly would run that past our town attorney. But that, I think we previously had this conversation and I think that was the feedback we got, which was, again, essentially your, your, the advertising is food trucks everywhere and then you would scale that back if that's the direction you went in. I don't think that requires, plus, you're also taking feedback as part of the public hearing process, which said to be more, potentially said to be more restrictive. So I don't think you'd need to re-advertise now.
Okay, so I, I'm perfectly happy to keep the public hearing open until the next time.
Thank you.
Close it and then vote.
Want a motion?
When, I, I want to offer one other thing. That is that, just to be clear, because some folks don't understand what we're talking about here. There was a process that was initiated earlier in twenty twenty-three to generate a draft text amendment to achieve something to enable food trucks. There was a meeting with primarily interested parties, including the commission members, but a draft document was made up and it was considered at a meeting and at a public hearing. And we, ultimately, the commission withdrew that application. That application was generated by the commission, not by members of the public. The commission generated that document. The commission withdrew it after hearing from the public and giving the matter further consideration. We withdrew it and we published another document. There was preliminary discussion and now we're having the public hearing on that second document. It had a very significant change in it where the first one required that the only place that food trucks could be, setting aside the list of things that could be done by exception, but by normal course of business, the site, sites for food trucks were limited to the property of existing restaurants and bars. No other locations would, were going to be allowed, just restaurants and bars. And it had to have, as they all would, permission by the owner of the property, which is to say, which is to say that the, the people who own or operate the restaurants and bars would have the control over whether food trucks were allowed on their property. And there was a reluctance to act on that and we basically redrafted. We published the second document and it's the one we're, we're meeting on tonight. It's dated October second. And the significant difference is it doesn't limit it to properties owned by, properties of existing restaurants and bars. It's permitted, basically, it's, it says that the mobile food vendors can use a variety of, of zones. So where they can be parked and, and selling food would be any zone, well, B one, B two, B three, PO, the I one, the industrial I two, and the PAT zoning district. So there's a whole array of places. And in each case, there's still a requirement that the owner of the property give permission, but it broadens the locations to not involve the requirement that it be a restaurant or a bar property. So it, it eliminates the control by restaurant and bar owners to limit who comes to Simsbury in a food truck. So that, that's the key difference now. I think that the reason that, the, you know, the, the notion that somehow it's secret, we, we've hidden the document away. It's not what happened. What we do is we follow our normal course of business. In public meeting, that original document was withdrawn. We ceased consideration of that document. And in subsequent meetings, we drafted another and have pursued consideration of the other one. But it's been stretched out over time due to other reasons and not that we don't have a taste for dealing with food trucks. So if, George, if you could take care of the, whatever we need to do in, in terms of making that document available to the public again.
Absolutely, absolutely. I would recommend a simple motion of, of continuing the public hearing to your February twenty-first meeting.
Great. Somebody want to make that motion, a commissioner?
I, I'll move to continue the public hearing to our next meeting, February twenty-first.
It's not your next meeting, but the February,
Our February twenty-first meeting.
So Tucker made the motion and, and Tony got the second on that one. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The motion carries, so the public hearing will stay open until we gather again on the twenty-first of February.
Bruce?
Yes.
Can I just make a, a quick comment?
Sure.
I think, I don't know where this fits into what, what we were just, what just happened, but I do think that that sort of rebuttal situation is, is not great. I think you come to, you make your public comment, that's it, you sit down. I don't think we, we could be here all night if we're rebutting each other.
Yeah. Thank you, Shannon. I'm in agreement and I will be more attentive in the future. When we see that start to emerge, something will happen. So if I, if that happened, now, I, I don't know how many public, public hearings I've sat through in the twelve years I've been on zoning, but I don't remember that happening before. So I think, you know, for the folks that are here, they can, you know, take that for what it's worth. So thanks for your thoughts. We're going to move on here. I'm just looking for my script. Our next item tonight is to resume the public hearing. We're resuming the public hearing on application twenty-three thirty-eight of Simsbury LLC owner Holden Sabato applicant for a Type Four master site development plan pursuant to Section five point oh, B four of the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code for the continuing, construction of a five hundred and eighty residential development at two hundred Hart Meadow Street. Since we're just doing a resumption of the meeting, we don't, we don't need the rest of that right now. But I, I think that the commission members are aware of this, but we have been a little bit surprised that in, in the last twenty-four hours, the applicant has submitted significant revisions to the application they submitted a few months back. So my plan for tonight was to have a further opportunity for the applicant to share with us any further input that they wanted to offer on their application. And then we would have, as it's a continuation of the public hearing, we would hear again from the public if there are members who have more to add or want to reiterate something they've already said. And then we would close, likely close, the public hearing process on this application. So in that we have a revision, we need to consider maybe a different approach. But George is going to sort of update us on sort of how this is coming together. And everybody's here, so we can kind of proceed how we wish. But I'm, we'll, we'll let George go first and then we'll, we'll come back to me for a moment.
Then you as chairman. So, so I'm going to talk for about two minutes. I'm just going to give you an update on what has happened since the, the January, the January third public, the public hearing date. So also going to update the, the record in terms of additional documents we've gotten. So you've got a revised staff report dated one seventeen, twenty twenty-four. It includes the planning commission's review and referral of this application. You referred this application to the planning commission for a review of the conformance to the, comprehensive plan, to the Plan of Conservation and Development. They reviewed it on January ninth and I am going to go ahead and just make that the record. The commission found that on balance, the development proposal conformed to the policies of the P O C D based on the following considerations and recommendations and modifications. So one, the commission recommended that the project include a true mixed-use approach with the addition of integrated non-residential elements, i.e. commercial retail office. The commission stated that the mixed-use elements would provide a better sense of place than the one hundred percent residential development as it stood today. Further, the commission added that the original intent of the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code for the South parcel was to include both residential and commercial uses. Two, in order to protect and preserve the scenic resource of Talcott Mountain Hillside and Ridgeline, the commission, the planning commission recommended that the four-story apartment buildings be, apartment buildings be reduced to a height of three stories. Three, the commission recommended that the project include some home ownership opportunities in order to provide for more diverse housing opportunities as opposed to a 100% leased or rental project. And then finally, the commission recommended that the applicant consider proffering a to-be-determined public amenity or public benefit onsite in an effort to mitigate impacts on community services. And that vote was five to zero and it is in, that referral is also in your packet. So the applicant has, has revised, has provided a revised master plan, which I'm going to let them walk through and I'll bring it on the screen in a second. The commission, um, the master plan dated 1/12/23, I mean essentially it exchanges 64 residential units for 27,000 square feet of commercial space. The applicant has also provided in your packet, a response letter dated 1/16/24 regarding the methodology of the school impact analysis. The applicant has submitted letters of support from Pritchard, Howard, Arnold, Jermaine, and Roy. And the staff has also received additional letters through today at 4:00 PM, so if anything came into my, my email after 4:00 PM, but including letters from Melvin, Van Cleef, Messino, Weiss, Weissbrick, Nash, and Payne. And I would just turn it over to the applicant.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, tonight Holden Sabatos here from Silverman as well as Laura Kroski from Kroski Architects and Rod Slawicki from, from VHB. We've been working on this for a long time, we've been before you informally and formally, we have an application pending, we were happy to be at the planning commission and we've been before the design review board. We do have some expressed ideas and requests for modification and we have put pen to paper and tonight I'm going to have Rod Slawicki go over the changes to the site plan and Laura Kroski give you details of the architecturals for the non-residential building. I'd also, Mr. Chairman, you suggested that you might have a change of approach because of the nascent nature of the changes that we've made, the applicant hereby offers to extend all the dates required so that you're not under a gun for, a statutory gun for, and we'd like to be able to be extended out at least another couple of weeks to complete.
Do you have a date?
The fifteenth?
Your, your next meeting is, would be February 5.
We'd like the commission to consider that and, and we'll extend the dates to accommodate that.
We didn't forget, I was going to bring that up, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you TJ. My name's Rod Slawicki, I'm a project manager of VHB and I'm here tonight to present the changes to the site master plan. George, if you could pull those up for us.
Okay.
So the, these changes are based on comments, concerns that we heard from the commission, from the public and from staff, that being the need for a commercial aspect to this development, the, the unit count was a concern and also the preservation of the view shed. So in our proposal here, as you can see, we're, we're removing apartment one and two, which were located along the north edge of the development. This, this in total is a loss of 64 units, bringing the proposal to 518 total. We're replacing apartments one and two with 27,000 to 28,000 square feet of proposed commercial retail office space, kind of a flex space. The, George, can you, can you flip to the zoom?
Say it again, sorry.
Is, is there, is there a, the next page? It'll, it'll help.
The zoomed one?
Yes, thank, thank you very much. So as you can see, that commercial building in the north side there, it's designed to be street front, streetscape, sidewalk connectivity to, to match the rest of the development. There's about 80 parking spaces dedicated to this building. The, the loading and the operations was strategically positioned to the north along the wood line so that the residents and the street and anyone passing by wouldn't be able to see the operations at the back of house. Like I said, sidewalk connectivity from the residential development, also from the trail to this location. We went through a few different renderings and revisions to this concept and as you know, retailers and commercial buildings, they like to be on street front, on major highways like Route 10. But based on the constraints of the code, we couldn't do that. To preserve the view shed, to, to also preserve the, the linear green buffer, we had to find another location. And we feel that this location here is, is the best fit based on the constraints that we have and it, and it fits well with, with the development. With that, I'd take any questions or I'd, I'd pass the presentation off to Laura Kroski, our project architect, to share some, some renderings of, of what we have here.
Could you just share with us a comment or two on what might be in that commercial building?
So, so the intent is to have this kind of flex space, open-ended to work with the, to work with the town of, and, and fill that space on market needs. So it's, there's, it's, it's really an open space for, for any users, you know, because as we learned on the north, it's difficult to fill these commercial spaces, so we want it to be flexible and as a need comes up, to fill those spaces. So it's, it's really a part of the master plan, we're creating a commercial zone aspect to, to give flexibility as, as the town asked for, as the commission wanted to see.
Well, the commission wants to see it because it's been in the regulations for six years now. And so it's not new, but none of these people created that zone. It was by another group.
Totally understood, totally understood, totally understood.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
So they, you said that there were 80 parking spaces with the commercial building?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly, okay. So where, where does that compare to the parking spaces that would be removed because the residential units aren't there or is that happening?
So that quad was, was developed to, to park itself for those residential, those 64 units.
So that's.
So those, those were removed and replaced with this 80 and, and the way this development is set up, it's, it's a mixed-use intent with the walkable community. So there's shared spaces on the street as well, so that 80 is just directly in front and for employees on the side, but you'll be able to park anywhere with this development and walk, walk over.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, how did you choose like the size of the commercial space versus like the amount of residential that's there?
So what we did is, is we, we had an open space in an area with that five acres that we wanted to make commercial use and, and we set it up to kind of, what, what could we max this out to fit in, in that, in that area that we removed the residential? So we, we almost had a block left in the development and how do we tailor that to fit the commercial use?
And so is there a line on there that represents the five acres?
No, so thi- this is just the, the rough engineering sketch of, of the concept development. What we would do is if, if this is the path forward, we'd update the whole master site development packet that you received showing the zoning breaks, breakdowns and the limits of zoning. It, it would really be along the street line, so it'd be that corner piece down, down to the parking, along the, excuse me, along the frontage.
But that five acres contains the commercial building?
Yes, yeah, it, it'd be the, the commercial zone, so it, so in theory, commercial uses would be allowed in there, whether they end up like this or maybe slight modifications when we get into cycling.
Okay. Just one more question. You exhausted the possibilities to get that space over more towards the middle of the development where, you know, you can hear it now probably, the people on the east side are going to be moaning if there's a coffee shop over here and they trek all the way across to, and they'll say, well, I'm going to go to Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, we, we'd hope that they'd walk to the space, right? We, we promote some exercise to get there. We, that's the intent of the walkable community, the sidewalks everywhere is to, to promote walkability.
Well, yeah, you guys are off the, just off the bike trail, so, I mean, I, I imagine this isn't complete, but I mean, you're definitely going to want to have a good amount of like bike racks and space set aside for that because not just people within the development, but, you know, coming in from around it too, so, yeah. Are you, uh, is that the main change that was made, just the addition of the commercial space?
That's correct, the, the reduction in 64 units and the addition of the commercial zone.
So you guys still have the, the single-family homes all dotted around the end there, right?
Yes, the rest of the development remained the same except for that, that triangle.
I, I guess I'm, so the, the, the thought process behind the single-family homes, I, maybe I, now I'm not an expert on like, on, on trends, like market trends, but I've not seen that really before a lot, like the single, single-family homes like that for rent outside of like a college town that like fraternities will rent out or whatever. What's, what's kind of the idea behind that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Holden Sabato speak to that, um, as far as market trends go and what they're seeing in, in the market.
Okay.
Again, Holden Sabato with the Silverman Group. No, it's an absolutely great question. It's, to be honest, something totally new to us. We've taken a look at the markets, um, as you probably know, interest rates are quite high, so the price, the price to purchase homes is, is pretty elevated right now and a lot of people can't afford it. So we figured, single-family for rent homes is, is something that, that could work and provide hopefully a more affordable option to purchasing and people that, you know, still want kind of a, a livable space, you know, give them the option.
All right.
I did have a couple of questions, please, once you're up here. The planning commission, in addition to recommending the addition of a commercial building, also recommended a reduction in size from four to three stories, also recommended an ownership, not having 100% rental, but having some of these be owner occupied. Is the Silverman Group considering any of those proposals?
We have, so to start off on the first point, we've discussed the reduction of units from the four-story to the three-story. It's obviously naturally something, you know, we, we don't want to move forward with. I think we, we do have a few ideas that we could definitely share with you and maybe after the extension of this public hearing that proposed in the next hearing, um, if we, if we think it'd be mutually beneficial. In regards to, sorry, your second.
The ownership is a 100% rental?
And that's been brought up a lot. It's not our business model, it's not what we do, we are long-term owners, we, we build spaces and we rent them out, right? It's, we don't build things for sale. I know that's what a lot of people want to see, um, and I think a lot of the point is, well, owners are, are more kind of integral to the community than the renters are. And that's perfectly understandable and I could definitely, definitely kind of understand that perspective. We provided, we were able to get from some of our residents from the north sites, as was included in the packets and made public, I believe, feedback from our residents of the north sites. Um, and it, you know, it's very clear that they love renting in Simsbury, they love living in Simsbury, they love the community, um, it's, you know, just because they're renters doesn't necessarily mean they're not part of the community, they're not here for the long term. So again, it's, it's just not our business model.
So I have the same concern, maybe ask it different ways. So interest rates are coming down and?
Sorry, um, interest rates have changed, they are coming down and we've heard from numerous residents that are looking for a for-sale product. They're not looking for a rental here. We've heard numerous comments about single-family homes that would be more affordable model. So if you could do these small individual homes, but make them for sale. We would like you to seriously consider that. We have brought that up before as a board, we brought that up months ago to you before your application came before us. So we are asking you to consider that.
Okay, yes, I understand.
I had, I had one more thing, if that's all right. Sure. Yeah, I mean, I, your business model is, is your business model. That being said, if, if it came down to especially taking down units, um, so the single-family for rent thing, there's, there's also, so yeah, there's, there's, people are looking to buy, obviously. People are also looking for stuff called like missing middle housing, quads, duplexes. I, duplexes is, someone in my age, my duplex is, is great for my needs. So if you, i- if it ends up being where we need to take this down to protect the view shed, which is extremely important, I would consider, uh, cutting some of those single families into duplexers or quad, or, or, or smaller middle-sized developments to where, I mean, it's a little more, it's, it's a little more realistic in terms of rent, obviously. If you're not considering the homeownership options, which again, you know, your business model is your business model, but just I would, I would look at that possibility too. I think I'd, you know, I would also say that the, the idea that, you know, renters are not as good or as ingrained as in, in, in town than, than owners, I, I would also push back on, but, um, it, it's just another thing, people are looking for smaller dwelling units, especially my age bracket.
Right.
Josh, what do you think? You, uh, looking for, yeah. So, you know, just saying, uh, the big, big single family is, is not necessarily what everyone's looking for, so.
Got it, I see, thank you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. For the, uh, the commercial building in terms of its location on the site, I mean, we're, what was the reasoning behind that? Because it feels a little bit tucked, like for a commercial where you have the Route 10 corridor, it feels a little bit like tucked back where people are going to have a hard time understanding or knowing that there's a business and it seems like you're not going to attract business tenants in there.
So, and as Rod pointed out, the alternate really was right along Route 10, right? But you, part of the Form-Based Code and, and based on a lot of the comments we received, that's not really an option, most likely block the view and I don't think people necessarily want the traffic, uh, right along Route 10 like that. So that was kind of, you know, an awkward corner of the site. It's, it still has frontage along Route 10, so we figured, hey, you know, if there's enough of a view directly to, to the commercial space, it, it could work.
I have a question, or I'm not sure if this is a question or a comment. As everybody knows, this process has been extensive and I'm newer to the commission, I've only been at a handful of meetings and I've heard the same commentary coming from our, our constituency about the concerns for this, this property, particularly with regard to, um, the size of the development, the number of units, the impact on the schools, the lack of multi-use. Here we are, ready to, um, move forward or do something and, and I'm wondering why the changes are coming now? Where have they been all along?
Absolutely.
Have you not, have we not been clear enough? I, I don't, I'm, that was my first concern when I read this report.
No.
Why now?
So we've been, I think this is our third hearing, correct? It's been public hearing for, for both hearings, for, for all three hearings. We have not actually really got formal zoning commission comments. We've heard a lot from the public, of course, and the planning commission as well, so especially after the planning commission meeting, we feel, we felt this is kind of the appropriate time, hey, we've heard enough, this is, you know, if we do want to move forward, we're going to need to change something. So that's, that's why now. Again, you know, it's, it's not our initial application, obviously we wanted to move forward with, with the full residential, it's what we're most comfortable with, but, um, based on the comments received thus far, this is how we feel is the best way to move forward.
In your other properties, um, you have other mixed-use properties that you guys manage or that you guys own, I assume, in other areas of the country or whatever?
I would say the vast majority of our properties are either fully residential or, uh, commercial, a lot of industrial, um, there's some, yes, some mixed-use, yes.
Okay, so not as many mixed-use, because I was going to ask if you, um, like how you are outfitting your mixed-use buildings in other areas so that they become successful? Because I know like we've heard from you on the north site and you had a hard time finding somebody, I'm glad that you did, I think that school is going to be a great addition to that community area there, but, um, yeah, like I just am not sure about this like blanket approach to the commercial, it just seems unintentional, like, well, we're going to check this box, but we're not really serious about getting a tenant in there, but we just need to check this box so we can build this other thing. And like we want the commercial people in there, that's why it's zoned like that, that's why that's recommended.
No, absolutely. Uh, I, so unfortunately, I can't think of another property that is similar enough to this in terms of, like we have one in Alexandria, for say, right, on King Street and Alexandria, which is downtown Alexandria, so it doesn't really work as a comparison. Um, I will say, and Laura will be able to speak to this better than I can, but the way we've, and again, very conceptual, rough designs, but the way we've set up the building can, can house, you know, really a multitude of users, so we think we're, we, hopefully at least, we could capture kind of a broad market range. You know, it kind of goes back to our main point, hey, look, you know, commercial here is, is, is risky, we, we don't know if it works or really how to set it up, but we did take a, you know, an absolutely deep look at it, see kind of how we could make it work and, again, not situated directly on Route 10. Um and we've again, feel like there's enough frontage here and we've we've set something up nicely that. That if there's users there, it would attract.
Where were you thinking of putting signage for the commercial entities?
I would say it would most likely be. I mean, that that page west entrance.
Because I would assume if we have an ongoing commercial entity, they would like to advertise their presence. And. The only way that you'd be able to do that effectively is having signage somewhere. Around it.
Yep.
Either around the complex or at one of the entrances.
And I think that's something we could probably definitely hash out at site plan as well, get more specific.
Um so I think I think the commission and the town's residents have made pretty clear that, you know, we would prefer a home ownership option. I'm not gonna beat you on that too much. I know, you know, it's your your business model. If you're not gonna consider that, would you consider raising the uh the percentage of affordable units?
I think it is, uh we would have to have that discussion internally after after this meeting.
Yeah, isn't that code twenty percent?
No.
Not in the Hartford.
So they're they're doing, they're doing ten, right?
I just want to add a comment that I I don't want to uh leave a mistaken impression with the audience that. That that it it's pressure from interest groups and namely the commission, the planning commission, zoning commission. That we want commercial on this property. That's not our interest. The code calls for a mixed use development on the south parcel. It doesn't call for a commercial development. It doesn't call for a development that's all residential. But it absolutely does not call for commercial to the exclusion of all other potential uses on this property. What we're looking for is mixed use and and you know, again, you know, to fl- flush out a little bit of what you said. You said you've made three presentations of this. Well, Holden, you and or members of your team. Came to the zoning commission at least three times with informal presentations of this concept. At each time, we told you, I was at every meeting and I offered this as it sounded like a choir. We wanted a mixed use development. That's what the code calls for. After hearing from us three times over a period of, I think it was most of a year, you came with this. It's not mixed use, it's a residential development. Having heard from us time and time and time again, mixed use. And so I accept this is your business model and I think I personally, I hear you. That's your business model. It's not what we wanted. I mean, anybody who reads the code knows it's not what we want. You know, it's not what we want.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The code specifically provides the right for the applicant to make a change in application and that's what we've done. We've done it totally consistent with the code. And now we're changing because we've heard comments.
Because you want to change it.
Because because the people, the zoning authorities in the town who we respect and we like. Have indicated that that's a path that they think we should take to go forward. But we're, but this is an application of right. We're four square within the Hartford's form based code.
I'm not suggesting that you're not.
Okay, fine, thank you. We're happy to have Laura Cross Crosskey to show some details of the building.
Good evening, I'm Laura Crosskey, um Crosskey Architects out of Hartford, Connecticut. We are the project architect. Um and I'm going to show a very conceptual rendering. I just wanted to give an idea of what. Um this non residential use building could look like. Um so this is a perspective view coming in from um the roundabout and headed towards the buildings, looking at the main. Facade and then the page left there would be the facade that faces Hop Meadow. Um so this, our goal here would really be to complement the residential building, seeing as it's in close proximity. We want it to be complimentary, but as well as I having its own identity and being distinct because it is a different use. Uh the building would be approximately twenty seven thousand square feet. Uh one story with a height of twenty five feet, which would give opportunity for a potential mezzanine for. Um any tenants. It is a flat roof building. Um and again, we'd be looking at this uh the opportunity for multiple tenants here with spaces divided up. Um and so you'll see there's different storefronts uh across the facade of the building, which helps break up the length of the facade. Um so again, exact use still TBD and um of course. Um as this develops more, we'll be looking at um the design developed a little bit more as well. So. Uh happy to answer any questions on this.
Was there any consideration given to put residential on top of the commercial?
Um in at this time, it hadn't been discussed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, not, I don't want to do your planet, but especially if if we're hearing a lot about how stuff might need to come down in height. You wanna might want to put those apartments somewhere and lots of places have apartments above businesses. That's that's a pretty tried and true technique, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we just want to reiterate that we'd love to give you more time if you want more time for the consideration of this and we'll sit here and listen to any comments anybody has on this.
We're next gonna move to the public audience.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a request?
Sure.
Um for town staff, so to this point, we've only heard of the studies done by the applicant. The school study, the traffic study. I'd like to request that we do our own independent study. Um I'd like four of them. The first one would be our independent study for the school impact. The second one would be for a fiscal impact.
To the town. The third one would be for town services impact, to fire, police, ambulance and social services. And the fourth one would be.
An impact on the traffic.
Anybody have reaction to uh?
Do we just say we'd like that to happen and you guys just? I was gonna say, you guys just wave a magic wand or how does how's that gonna work exactly?
Like to start the discussion.
Sure, yeah. Like what what do we have? Like we know agencies would be running the. That study, I guess. Like would it be police and fire just doing their own study? Just, okay. That's true.
Well, it's more complicated than that.
I think that's the question.
So the town code does have provisions for independent review. Of complex projects. We we call it technical assistance. Um and let me just read from the section. The planning commission may require additional technical assistance in reviewing and evaluating applications for large and complex projects. That has a definition of over a hundred thousand square feet or more than two hundred spaces. This clearly meets the the requirement for that. The requested technical assistance shall directly pertain to the to the jurisdiction. Um so so it is something you can ask for, but um what happens is is that. Staff would essentially identify. Through a through a through a potential RFP process. Expertise in those categories that that um that Ms. Batos mentioned. Um we would do that, we would get a price for that. We would take that proposal to the Board of Selectmen. For their approval of the price and authorization to do so. And there there there's a bunch of other steps that.
The reading you just did, George, was seemed to refer to the planning commission.
The zoning commission, conservation commission in the way, sorry. All of our land use boards ha- have the ability to do this.
Okay.
How about an estimate of the time from beginning to end?
Yeah, um it's it's at least a sixty day plus process. At least. Um so it's. It's sixty days. You have, you 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 have um. We we have the ability to do extensions to this project to the tune of a total of sixty five days. Um we are gonna, we are going to borrow from that if if that's the decision you make tonight as as we start, because you'll have, technically would have to public. Close the public hearing by in two days, so we would begin to add those 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 procedures in. So it's possible to do this, yes. Um. We would need to get the proposals, do the review. I we would bring the proposals to you for the review for selection of the consultants and then on to the Board of Selectmen for final approval.
I.
And I'm happy to, I mean, I would love to 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 map this out a little clearer for you. Um. It just happened. I I did not know this question was coming tonight. But I but I did grab the complex project from the from the code um and have it in file. Typically, uh when when the applicant pays for this, it is a review of the applicant's material and not independent studies. So independent studies in and of themselves um. Create more complexity.
Well, what Jackie, what are you suggesting? You're suggesting an independent study and not a review of the applicant's study.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, okay, understood.
So your sixty day idea with RFPs and approvals by the Board of Selectmen. That's for an independent review, not a review of.
That's correct. I I understand.
So my um. At at this point and um I feel that we have enough information from the developer to. Consider their process and their business model or whatever, however you would um categorize that. I do think we are lacking um independent in information. Um based on information that we may find and and perhaps there's a way to utilize such information. On more than one project. If we are considering additional development, if this, whatever the case may be, I agree with Jackie, that's what I'm saying. Let's leave it up to the um. Board of Select.
So so let me let me just, I know we're in the middle of a public hearing here, but let me let me try to be the town planner for just a second and give you just potential guidance here. I I think the first part of. Settling of kind of where you're coming from is on a land use mix. So it's it's hard, it I mean, it's. The question is, is do you do you do you want a study of the five hundred and eight or what what was five hundred and eighty sing- residential units? Now, if this body is not comfortable with, no matter what, five hundred and eighty residential units without a commercial. It might not make a lot of sense to do an an individual study for that. Um but you but you, we certainly can do that. I I just, I think it might be. Well, I just think it might be more helpful to to work on the mix. Now, if there's no, if there's no movement on the mix and the applicant's not willing to to do that, then yeah. We 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 can do that.
Well, that that's, you you bring up a good point in that if they were gonna make changes to this based on some of our recommendations and based on like, if we did a study on this product. We might be doing a study on a product that's outdated. Like already, if changes were gonna be made.
We've asked the applicant to make changes and this is what they've, right? And I'm in fairness.
The planning commission has asked them to make changes.
Yeah, I don't know that we.
We haven't asked them anything.
Board and I think that's what we need to do right now is uh I guess we need to hear from the public and then as a board, we need to figure out. What it is that we need to see and we need to be clear to them so that they can know what we're asking for. In a really clear way, because I think the public has been pretty clear about what they want, but I'm not sure that like we we keep sidestepping ourselves out of this. Process by listening to them, letting the public speak and then and then being concluding for the evening. Based on that and we need to be clear about what it is that we're requesting.
Well. You're right about that, but there's a sequence to this process that my feeling has been that we need to give the public and the applicant. Whatever time they need to make a compelling case. But um I felt like we should hear what they have to say and give them whatever time they need and we were almost there. And then we would have the public conversation establish how we feel. That could be actionable. And uh we'd go forward from there, but um yeah, so it it leaves it a little bit uncertain, but. We're not drifting around here. There's a code. It's a hundred and sixty pages. It was adopted six years ago. Um it's no surprise. The the property owner acquired the property a year after that code was established. So it's been in place all that time. It hasn't changed a word, no changes, all that time. And now, I don't think it's unclear what we want. To the readers of that code, it's in there, something that's consistent with the code. And on page one, item number one, mixed use development. The thing about a mixed use development is the mixed use creates a sense of vibrancy, an enhanced place, an enhanced place. Uh it it is not, you know, one commercial building and a hundred and, you know, odd residential buildings. I mean, we all will have our own take on it, but that falls short of creating that sense of vibrancy and energy and attraction. That we're trying to get in the south parcel. It ain't, it's not, I don't, I I I have a tough time seeing it happen with that. Twenty seven thousand square foot building. It's only my initial reaction. I've looked at that diagram a couple of times since yesterday when I got it off my computer. And now I have some explanation in the visual, so I don't know, but. You know, I I haven't, I hesitate to say I'm done with this. I'm not done with this. There's more to be said. We have more input from the public. We have more interest in the in the applicant in making changes. Whether they want to make the big changes. We don't know that yet. We hear they don't want to or they would have. And things that we may have that are of interest identified in the code are not part of the business model. And so, you know, we're 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 a bit at sea right here, so. I think what we should do is hear from the public, any comments that are out there and then take a few minutes ourselves and figure out next step. What are we gonna do? What do we want to do? We have some latitude here. Not necessarily gonna make everybody happy, but we need to make a decision and a strategy on how to push forward. And one of them is is to take up the delay in the in the process and have, you know, sort of a sidetrack with the. Studies, which might be well, money well spent, but.
I think Kate makes a good point in that. No individual commissioner has yet publicly stated his or her position on this specific application. Nor have any of us publicly stated what we would like to see other than in generality. So I think that makes it challenging for the applicant, you know, so for the public.
You want to do that now or do you want to hear the?
I just wanted to, I wanted to just uh support Kate's point.
Oh, yeah, I I support Kate's point so. Yeah.
That there is agreement.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
If I could make one note, um Mr. Chairman, the. Studies that have been accomplished thus far were studies done on five hundred and eighty eight units. They were not done relative to a commercial component. They were not done with relation to a reduction of the number of units. That would be residential. And I think that with adding on a commercial component, as much as yes, this is a mixed use and. That is the concept that we wanted from the get go. A commercial addition is going to have an impact on traffic. A commercial, a commercial addition is going to have an impact on fire safety, police. The reduction of forty four units or forty eight units is going to have an impact on the school. So it would behoove us to make sure that we are having the right studies. For the actual final project that is being presented for our review and our.
Yeah.
Uh thumbs up or thumbs down. So it makes sense to me. So, it makes sense to me that if we're not going to have any additional studies provided by the applicant, that we should be considering doing our own, just putting that out there.
So, you're, well, wait a minute, I'm not sure what your suggestion is, other than you endorsing the idea of do studies.
Well, I, I'm not sure that the current studies that we have now are actually applicable.
Good point, yeah.
Because we now have some significant changes.
Right.
If the applicant is able to provide addendums to their studies, that's fine, but we should be considering our own at this point in time as well.
Others? Well, this is, I mean, enlightening, if we want to keep doing this, if we want to hear from the public.
We could open it to the public and then continue, yeah.
Then, we're going to go back to the concept of public audience. If there are people here tonight who want to speak on this application, and again, you need, as we, we should have made it clear, and I should have in the first public hearing, it's not a debate. You have an opportunity to address the commission. You're not addressing each other, it's not a public debate, but it's an opportunity to share your insights and your thoughts. So, whoever would like to be first, please come to the microphone and give us your name and address, and the next speaker can be close by and we'll go from there.
Good evening, Pat Weissbrich, Three Lenora Drive. I was the first one up last time. I have Simsbury Community Band Rehearsal at seven o'clock, I think I missed another one. I'm glad to see the direction that the discussion is taken because of the Form-Based Code. I don't mean to correct our chairman here, but the Section One Point O A, the first, first bullet, first point, it talks about the North Hartford, but then it says, "And to encourage the reuse of the South Hartford site and building office, technology, healthcare, and support services." That's the primary focus of this. And then, it goes on to say, "While preserving, while feasible, or where feasible, the environmentally sensitive design of the overall site," and then it gets into mixed use. So, what, the original design was for a commercial space. And I, I'm sorry to say, but having a very, very lengthy portion of the public discussion devoted to the applicant with new information makes it very difficult for those of us who don't speak very well publicly and have something written down that's now all crossed out like my last one was. So, you know, I try not to make a fool of myself in public, but I seem to be very good at it. But, as I said in the last one, Simsbury needs starter homes for people, but more than that, they need jobs. My husband and I left Simsbury for ten years and rented out our house. Why? Because we couldn't afford the taxes, we couldn't afford to live here. We went someplace else where we could get jobs, and then when we retired, we came back. That's a sad commentary. And I am asking you as commissioners to get a thirty-thousand-foot view of what this whole thing with the Hartford is. The Hartford left because of a decision made, parking garage. So, now, ten, fifteen years later, we're talking about all sorts of high-rise housing and that sort of things. We need jobs, we need jobs here, not, not retail where they might pay somebody fifteen bucks an hour if you're lucky. We need good jobs, a job that can support a house, a job that can support the taxes, that, my taxes, by the way, went up twenty-five percent this year. It's a big increase. So, as you're well aware, the testimonies regarding this application have almost been unanimous in agreement that this proposal is a bad idea. But I, I do want you to look at what really happened. I mean, Simsbury contracted Gateway Planning, a Vialta group partner that specializes in urban development. Everything in it is urban development. They, Gateway Planning runs the Form-Based Codes Institute, and the express purpose of running this institute is for the participants to learn how to use Form-Based Codes to solve problems that are created with, by conventional zoning was the wording. So, they've assumed already that we have problems in our zoning. And to gain in-depth understanding of the urban form and how to conceptualize the urban character, I'm sorry, maybe, maybe I was, it all happened when we were gone for ten years, but I don't think of Simsbury as urban. In fact, when we moved here, I believe it was, West Simsbury was owned rural, correct me if I'm wrong on that one, maybe it was semi-rural. But I, I just don't believe that the Silverman proposal can be viewed in isolation for all that's happening. Rental units, we've gone on that, but at this writing, according to the Simsbury Assessors' Office, the rental inventory in Simsbury is already seventeen hundred and fourteen units. The South Hartford South Project, if accepted as proposed, would add five hundred and eighty, and then we haven't even gotten to Barbara Grove that I know of, with an additional hundred and seventy-five units, bringing the total up to twenty-four sixty-nine. And if I remember correctly, I don't have this in my notes, but the total housing inventory in Simsbury is ten thousand fifty-four or something like that. So, we're talking rental units, there are almost twenty-five percent of the housing units that are available. We don't need more, we need more businesses so people can afford to live here. And relative to a side conversation that came up about the ten percent, I believe I submitted something to you last week that came in late, but if you read it, I ran the numbers on if developers add ten percent of what they're proposing, ten percent as affordable, whether they are applying under eight thirty G or not. But ten percent, you can add ten percent and ten percent and ten percent, and if you saw the numbers, it would, it would take you ten million houses, ten million units to get to the ten percent that the state is mandating we have. Now, under the H thirty G code, it's thirty percent, and it, I would take seven or eight years, I've forgotten, I revised, I gave a revised spreadsheet with that one, and you can see how, how many units it would take, but we're still up to an awful lot of units. So, anyway, I'm sorry to take your time, and I've missed my rehearsal, and I do hope that you will not.
Thank you.
That you will deny this proposal. Thank you for listening to my rant.
Good evening, my name is Sheila Gishwind, I live at Five Hawks Lane in Simsbury. I'm actually a Realtor in town as well, so I feel like I do have some boots on the ground here with what people are looking for, and I appreciate the time, and I will hopefully be fairly brief. First of all, I'd like to challenge the Silverman Group and the town of Simsbury to pave the way for housing in Connecticut. It's actually a fairly affordable area for people to live in compared to what's been going on in the rest of the country. We saw waves of people coming into Simsbury, in particular, the Farmington Valley during COVID. Many people came out of the cities, California, Texas, Boston, a lot of people did come here to rent because they were trying to get out of the cities, out of elevators, closed housing and everything like that. I have my notes here on my phone here. But I really think more rental units, I think we're being very shortsighted. In the last, when I first started in real estate about fourteen years ago, people would call up and say, "Do you have any rentals in Simsbury?" And we had about two options. We now have many options in town, Granby's putting in apartment buildings, Windsor's opened up new apartments, Avon has, Canton, which has traditionally been a very rural area, just opened a big complex. I really think that we need to look into it. Six, seven years ago, we used to get flyers on a regular basis in the office offering incentives to agents to bring their tenant, tenants in and to get different incentives for people to rent. We didn't see that during COVID, but we're starting to see it again, and that's telling me that there's definitely occupancy in these rentals, and I really think that you should be looking into that. I have a client, clients who are looking to purchase homes in town, and they cannot find homes in town, they are in rentals, but they can't actually get out of their lease now because there's occupancy in their leases, and they have to now wait till their lease is up, okay, or they're going to have to pay an extra expense. Where during COVID, when people were coming in from the cities, and that's, and to me, that's a fairly temporary, that was a temporary solution, people are being asked to go back into their offices. You know, now, there's occupancy in these apartments, and I really think you should give a little bit of thought into that because we have a lot of apartments, not only in Simsbury, but in the surrounding area that we never had five years ago. When I challenge, when I ask you to challenge you, I really think you need to look into the affordability component. How can we make affordable housing for people who are downsizing? We see a lot of seniors who are moving out of town because they want to stay here, but they can't afford to stay here. We see a lot of young, you know, young people, Tucker, I'm looking at you, I know you're my son's age, who want to, they're first-time home buyers, and it's really challenging for them to, for them to purchase homes. And I have clients who have had their children in their mid-twenties moving back home because they can't afford two thousand twenty-four hundred dollars a month for a studio or a one-bedroom apartment. And that's not in New York City, that's in, that's in the greater Hartford area, okay? So, I really want to challenge you to, how can we be a little bit more forward-thinking on the affordability and what we can offer? I think town homes are a great, a great option, but town home's not for rent, town home's for sale. Silverman Group, I know you're a very large group, I've, you know, I've done some research on you, rent-to-own concept. There's a lot of people out here who would love to own a home, but they probably need to start out renting, okay? Use your knowledge about rentals and how do you provide, how do you provide opportunities for people to rent to own? Single-four living for our seniors and people who need extra assistance, we don't have a lot of single-floor homes in town. Ranches are few and far between, and Powder Forest is a very, you know, years ago, it was, took a while to sell, but you cannot find a house in there now, okay? When they go on the market, they're off within a day or two. A recreational component, if you look at the neighborhoods in the south, they all have recreational components to them, not just necessarily pools, we have a great Simsbury Farms complex, pickleball courts, active and passive recreation, dog parks, okay? It's more of a planned unit type of development, but I think that these are opportunities that we haven't capitalized on in northeast. But if you see them down in the Georgia area, Florida area, it's things that people really love that work-life balance. We definitely need more work, industrial space, office space. I don't think we need another big box store or grocery store, Avon's putting in a whole development right around the corner from there, okay? I think we need to have some smart development where we're bringing jobs into the area and people can live and they can walk to work. I really, I, I kind of kudos to the people who have offered, I think we need to do a study, five hundred and eighty residential units, I think that there's going to be an impact to our schools, and I'm concerned about our voluntary fire and ambulance departments. I was very active in the PTOs while my kids were in school, they're now in their twenties, and back then, we had half-day kindergarten, we didn't have full-day kindergarten. That space is being used for full-day kindergarten, there also, I, it's, I feel like there's, the schools are offering a lot of wonderful services for our students here that take up space, and I, you know, yes, I think the population of students is less than it was before, but I think you have to look at not only the population, but the space that's used and the cost and the expense to, for that. So, that's all I have to say, but thank you, but I do, I challenge you because I know you're a very successful group, and I know you have it within you to kind of bring the right thing, the right concept to Simsbury. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Coe, Twenty-Six Wickham Drive. At the January third, twenty-twenty-four zoning hearing, the Silverman Group presented ten substantive changes to the site plan, a site plan submission. The Silverman Group is a multimillion-dollar operation with thousands of staff to follow regulations submitted to various towns. The present changes appear to have been submitted due to the realization that the financial climate has changed and the cost-benefit analysis shows diminished profits. The Simsbury, the Hartford Simsbury Form-Based Code was developed for this specific project, and all development applications from the Silverman Group should comply with these regulations or be denied. The zoning commission was not elected to maintain, maximize the profits of an applicant, but hold the applicants to comply with the zoning regulations. No matter how powerful the applicant is, they should be, they should not be allowed to dictate the rules of engagement. The zoning commission is elected to protect the town from predators who come to town to maximize their profits by changing the character of Simsbury. The Form-Based Code was specific to the sale of the Hartford to the Silverman Group. Regulations were put in place to protect the community from an increase in housing with a balance of commercial buildings to offset the costs on additional resources imposed on the town and an enormous change in property values and quality of life issues. All the players in this application process were aware of the contents of the Form-Based Code and decided to ignore the regulations which were put in place prior to the sale of the property. The zoning commission should require the Silverman Group to comply with our rules to the letter of the law and reject the application as presented, and all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch and Twitter at Joan Coe, and I have just a, I have just a point. At one of the meetings, it was questioned whether Tucker Saul alleged to have some kind of conflict of interest because he works for Desegregate Connecticut. Has anybody looked into that to see whether it's appropriate for him to be on the land use board for this particular project? I just thought they, Mike Payne always got into trouble for conflict of interest, and it should be just reviewed by somebody to see whether this is appropriate or not. Thank you.
Mark Conrad, Eleven Morning Side Drive, Weetog. When I came to Simsbury in the summer of nineteen ninety-eight, it came after immigrating here from Bolivia in South America by adoption. I remember when the Hartford insurance property, when that was an employer-based property. Simply stated, I do not see myself living here in this town once I find a job upon completing graduate school this past month. I do not see myself residing in this town anymore for similar reasons spoken before, principally being that I cannot afford to live in Simsbury. My age is twenty-seven, I just graduated from graduate school. I will turn twenty-eight age sometime this summer soon, and I do not see myself living in this town because I cannot afford it. I'm not saying that the firm here, our colleagues who have graciously taken their time to be here, should not, should not be excluded from a development project that benefits the community, but rather fundamentally, I think it's in everyone's best interest to consider the affordability issue that young, up-and-coming college graduates such as myself are facing with. I have a college that, I'm not afraid to admit that, I was very thankful to pursue and earn three higher, three degrees in higher, in higher education, all of which were done here in Connecticut. I gave up a lot to be at home and commute to school for the time that I did, but once again, fundamentally, there is an affordability issue. None of the jobs, suffice to say, that I found so far that I applied to pay more than six figures. Thank you.
Susan Bean Cleve, Six Mallard Circle, it's in Terrifford.
Susan Bean Cleve, 6 Mallard Circle, it's in Terrifield. I wasn't planning to speak because I submitted comments, and I know that a lot of you, either we agreed or something, I heard a lot of the things I submitted. But after hearing this conversation, I had a few comments, and I hope I make sense because I'm not good off the cuff. So I, when Bruce mentioned the mixed-use, you know, I know what that is, and I took out my phone and I saw these beautiful little mixed-use proposals. I don't even know if they've ever been built. It's like building a little village on this side of town that would be a place for the people who live there and would attract other people. And it's got a lot of affordability, like maybe apartments on top of the stores. I think that would be phenomenal, and I would love to see something like that. But I think, what I think about when you talk about some of these other buildings that go in mixed-use, what worries me is not that it isn't something that would be wonderful, is what is the actual need? And do we know that? Do we have studies that says down the road in the Farmington River Valley, we would need some office space? Would we need some more commercial space? What type of commercial space? Because we see things like that weird yellow building next to Cumberland Farms, that the Silverman Group had trouble with this other building, that they're going to build by the new Starbucks, some building, and they have nothing for it that's commercial. I mean, it just seems like you're going to put in all these resources, natural resources, build these things because something says something. And is that need? What is the need? And it just seems like we're just grasping at straws to try to make something fit, something that was written six years ago when the world has changed a lot. That said, I do think that would be the best bet for this property. So I just, it's like two things can be simultaneously true at the same time. I question, would it be, would it work? And then the other thing is the affordability issue. I really think that's really critical, and I understand that developers feel like they can't make a profit, but it is so, it's all I hear. And, you know, having been in that situation, having been lucky to have found something that at least I can afford to stay in this town after I retire, at least so far I can, I'm lucky. I was just lucky that that place was available that day when I needed to purchase it. Other than that, I would have left Simsbury. So I really think we have to figure that out, and I wish the developer would be more open to that. And the last thing I want to mention in the last meeting, Mark Scully came up here, and I hope that the developers actually meet with the Sensibility Committee. Because that also, just think about building something that really we can be proud of, that we put, that the developer and us have put the time into, something that is for the future, not just something that's to make a buck or to fill in some Form-Based Code. So I hope I made sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I sent in comments previously about the critical habitat and light pollution and other kind of environmental issues, and also about the buffer on Route 10, so I won't repeat those things that I sent in writing. My comments tonight are, so I'm a little bit unclear if the developer's meeting our code or if they're still asking for variances. So if they are asking for variances, obviously, we're under no obligation to grant those variances. And I just want to, you know, emphasize what it's clear that the community is saying that we do want and what we don't want, which I won't repeat what other people have said. But the things that people don't want, and I hear this all the time through Open Space or through my work at The Grange, is people don't want Simsbury to be covered with tall buildings and feel like West Hartford and all of that. We don't want to have just all of these rentals going in, and we want to have a sense of place, which isn't just the ability to see the ridge line, it's also the feeling in town when you drive down Route 10. So it's my understanding that this is sort of in the already-developed footprint, but it looked like from the renderings, there's going to be a lot of additional clearing along Route 10. So that's something to consider. One thing about the rentals is if you look at the data in Data Haven, and no one ever really talks about this, that Simsbury actually has a higher rate of homeownership among, I think, two different underrepresented groups than most towns. And we don't really talk about that aspect of homeownership in Simsbury. So I really think that if the developer is willing to be flexible with their business model, there's ways that we can be really forward-thinking about affordable housing, about housing that's accessible and inclusive. And one of the things that's rarely talked about in 830G is the opportunity for having manufactured homes, of which 100% of them would count as affordable. They could be single-story, they can be customized for people that have different kinds of accessibility needs or other kinds of challenges. They could be rentals, they could be owned, people would have their own place and sort of pride of ownership. It wouldn't affect the view shed. I would think that people in town would be very happy about that and willing to kind of adjust whatever zoning things to allow that. And if you do that, you can make a, it's not one-acre zoning, you can get several per acre is very standard. So this could be really 100% affordable, inclusive, accessible, could be rentals or owners, and could really allow people a chance for community pride and not getting into the situation where we have just this, you know, 10% affordable, and then the rest are totally unaffordable. I watched the Planning Commission meeting where they said it was consistent with the PO, largely consistent with the P O C D. If you didn't watch the meeting, I just want to say it's not like the Planning Commissioners were happy about it. They know that people don't want tall buildings, they don't want all these rentals, and, you know, the other things that were specified in the letter. But they said, well, it's largely consistent. So I just don't, you know, this seems to be a problem that we know what people do and don't want, but now we have documents that are saying that what people don't want is what we have in our documents. The Planning Commission mentioned a public benefit. I'd like to bring up something that I've brought up multiple times, which doesn't seem to get on the table, is that there's no bus line that goes by all of these developments. So if people want to have housing that's accessible, affordable, and inclusive, and be able to get to their job, there needs to be a way to get there. And that corridor of Route 10 should have had a bus, you know, forever. I've sent in so many comments to IQuil, to Connecticut, whatever it is that had a study, talked to state reps, talked to selectmen, talked to people in town, never seems to get any traction. So I don't really understand how we keep on talking about building more and more and more stuff, and we never talk about the community lifelines that people need in order to get around and actually have a life. So related to my comments that I sent in on the critical habitat, natural database for biodiversity, light pollution, et cetera, I'd like to add that if we are going to do any studies, we should consider an environmental impact study and add that to the school, other studies that were mentioned. And I also want to say, you know, now we're at the point where the public hearing is supposed to close in two days. It really, for such a complex, large project, it really wasn't a great idea to have the time clock on this public hearing start right before Christmas, have most of the time taken up with a large holiday period, and now, and have the, what I found out at the last meeting that I watched on TV, is you can't accept any information after the public hearing closes. So I'm going to go back to my original point. If this doesn't meet our regs, just say no. Just say no. Let's have a forward-thinking plan. I offered one that I hope you seriously, I hope you seriously consider it. Manufactured housing, one floor, rental or ownership, all the other good stuff I said. And so just say no. Let's put in a really forward-thinking thing that could be a real public benefit, and thank you very much.
My name is Marcia Frankel. I'm at 1 West Street. I spoke at the last hearing, and I got home and it really bothered me what I learned here, because I have been away from Simsbury for a number of years. So let me tell you a little bit about me. What I've done my whole career is worked in human resources. I work with people. I mediate, I negotiate, I do all of that. My guiding principle in what I do is if it doesn't feel right, you don't proceed, whether it's hiring an executive, whether it's hiring an hourly worker. If something feels off, you put a halt to it. What I also know for sure is that what I've learned now is this whole thing started six years ago, right? Six years ago? What I know for sure is that the world is not the same as it was six years ago. Simsbury is not the same as six years ago. Our needs, our wants are not the same as six years ago. Nobody six years ago anticipated the need for a post-COVID world, and that's what we're living in now. Things change. This does not feel right. So I did a little research. I hope I don't insult anybody from your group. I didn't have a lot of time, and there's a lot about you online. I want to read one thing, and then I'll tell you who wrote, who said it. He said, "What we do, we welcome projects that add vibrancy and life to our community and add value to our neighborhoods. We cannot allow the wrong project to overburden our streetscape, to make property owners a quick buck at the expense of our town's culture, identity, and future." The gentleman that said that, you might know the name, was the mayor of Maristown, New Jersey. And he stopped a project that was being worked on by the Silverman Group. He decided that as mayor, it is and always will be his main job, his first priority, will always be preserving the heart and soul of our great town. I make no apologies for insisting that development, whatever it is, is appropriate to its location. I don't know how things ended for him. I know he went down a pretty rocky road. There was lawsuits the Silverman brought against him, and he didn't really care. He did what he felt he was right. He did what he felt was, he was elected by his community to do, to protect and preserve his town. I hope you all can look amongst yourselves and decide to be a little bit of Tim Doherty is his name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Turner, 11 Barnard Drive, Simsbury. The last speaker mentioned the quality of life here in Simsbury, and we've had a lot of talk about the impacts to our highway system, our roads, our schools especially, the water courses at the south end of town. And there's one aspect that I'll bring up just briefly, that in our neighboring states, Massachusetts and New York, the governors have required foreigners to be housed in various institutions, some of them that were containing veterans who have been forced to be removed, to make way for foreigners who have been housed and taken care of there. Also in schools that have been emptied in order to let other foreign visitors be housed and stay in these venues also. I don't know if this could possibly happen in Simsbury with talk at Mountain South, but it's just a thought that I thought we could keep in mind that there is a possibility of a situation like that occurring in our town too. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 15 Oakhurst Road. I wonder if the Silverman Group is aware that recently, the Simsbury Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to create a fair rent commission with the full authority to compel attendance of persons at hearings, to conduct investigations, issue subpoenas, order rent that they consider excessive, reduced to an amount it determines to be fair and equitable. In effect, our town has created its own little judiciary body pursuant to the Connecticut General Statutes. You might want to double-check if your legal and leasing pricing departments see if this is even a town in which you want to roll the dice of being landlords of so many rental units, because a small body of politically-appointed residents can literally tell a landlord the rent on a property is too high and require the landlord to reduce it. Those are not affordable units. Those are regular landlord-owned units. I'm not a developer, but I wouldn't think that would be too great for profits. But if the Silverman Group still wants to proceed here despite growing opposition from townspeople, while changes have been made, I still have tremendous concern about what is proposed. I'd like to point the commission's attention to a careful review of the developers' responses to town comments from the January 3rd packet. One of the words most frequently used is flex or flexible or flexibility. We heard that again tonight. That translates into we'll figure it out later and put in what we want after you've approved this and no longer have any control over us. You just heard this tonight, but staff also recommended affordable units provided pro rata across all unit types. The applicant response in that packet was that the affordable units are to be in the stacked flats, quote, "for greater flexibility." The only greater flexibility that provides is for higher rental income for the developer. I drove by other developments over there that are three stories. They are enormous. They're a small city. Now they want four stories. Let's please not lose sight of that. The flat-roofed buildings, like the ones presented tonight, need to be evaluated by Design Review Board because they don't appear to be consistent with town architecture. Comments made by the developer, I believe at the last meeting or possibly in those submitted comments about the disrepair of the property indicated that we needed to do something because the property was in such disrepair. As the previous speaker mentioned, they've owned that property in the vicinity of six or seven years, so any disrepair is their responsibility. Couple of other comments I'd like to point out that were in that packet. Town staff asked if the developer would provide access to the river. They reiterate that they will allow access for emergency, but make no mention of use by the general public. They mentioned in the packet that a small portion of the neighborhood, a small portion, somebody needs to really look up the definition of that word, will be visible from Hot Meadow Street. I don't know what small means, but I don't think we're all on the same page on that word. The staff asked, who will be responsible to pay for maintenance and any liability of multi-use paths? Will 100% of these be on the developer and paid for ongoing, or will any costs of that shift to the town? Staff made comments about projection of garages coming out in front of the buildings, as is the case with one of the developments over there on Hot Meadow now, making them an inappropriately dominant feature and wanting them to prevent what they call snout houses. That was ignored by the developer. The wetland survey that was used to determine the usable acreage for the Simsbury Water Pollution Control Authority application approval in June, the survey that was used was completed in 1997. That was 26 years ago. I don't know if we have one that's more recent, but that's a long time. Staff made comments about two-car tandem parking outside garages, making these properties look like a used car lot. Staff recommended a parallel or double-wide driveways to prevent stacking of vehicles. I don't see that that was addressed. Parks and Rec mentioned that there would be additional residents, both adults and children, as a result of the development, that will very likely necessitate the need for additional athletic fields and may require additional parks, maintenance positions. I didn't see anything in the development addressing this and providing athletic fields to town residents to use. That might be an option. Um, there were specifications in the plan about using certain kinds of native plants. Um, and I know there's been town discussion about pollinator pathways and things like that. When asked if post-construction property management would be held to the same standard with regard to replacement of the plantings of annuals and tree replacement, et cetera, the non-answer given by the applicant was, quote, "The owner has, will have onsite personnel to monitor and coordinate maintenance." I don't think that answered about the type of replacement plantings. The town engineer commented that the project shall conform to Connecticut Stormwater Quality, the Stormwater Quality Manual, and erosion control and sediment control. And the applicant's response was, "We're practical." That's another one of those funny words like flexible. The Aquarian Water Commitment Letter for the Public Water Source, um, noted that Aquarian, and you'll need to go back and read this. It was at the end of the, um, responses to town comments document on the January 3rd packet, said something to the effect that Aquarian could commit to water, the water availability that they committed to if the project was completed by a certain date. And I think it was like November 2024 or something. So if they can't complete this within Aquarian's window, then Aquarian can't commit to a certain amount of water for this project. What does that do for all of the other residents in town that are on Aquarian water and get their water off of the local aquifers? Those are my thoughts and considerations, um, and I hope you will carefully consider them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Anne McDonald, 3 Tammerack Lane. Thank you, everybody, for taking time out. Just a couple of things. A lot of people already kind of hit on a lot of things I wanted to say, but I won't repeat them. I wanted to mention, though, the last time I saw something from the wetlands on this property was, uh, September the 5th in the minutes. Am I, did I miss something or did they already approve it? Because of, uh, quite a few pieces on that parcel are sitting within the 100 Upland River Review. And it had stressed something about, oh, they had to come up with all these stormwater drain issues and everything. But I didn't see anything past September 5th, but I could have missed it. Um, also, I think, just like other people say, we need a, uh, some type of studies because I see a lot of resources depleted with, you know, five, one, I says 518 units plus the commercial building. So it's really not 518, it's really more than that. Cause you have people in the building that are just the business, right? And people coming and going for that. So, but even like the trash, I noticed that the north end, they don't even use a local trash company. They have somebody come in. It's not a lo-, it's not pains. I forgot what I saw in the trash cans when I walked over there, just kind of checking out. And actually, snow removal was pretty tight over there this past one-foot snowfall, which was really interesting because I wanted to go by and see how, how they kind of did. It was interesting. A lot of people lost their parking spaces and they, it was like they didn't have a thought ahead of time where they were going to put that one foot of snow. Just thought I'd mention that. And I wanted to say to the four stories, I think, in the town bylaws or whatever, haven't I read something previously back, way back? That you only allow a maximum of three-story buildings? So I don't understand, has that been changed? We allowing more? Because from what I read back, back, it's only a maximum of three stories. I guess there could be, uh, extenuating circumstances, but I thought it's only three. So like, uh, really, do we really need four floors? You know? And also 10%, the 10% deal of affordable housing. I want to ask, you offer those up, the 10% initially. A year later, can you just not renew those people's leases? And then offer those particular apartments up at full price? Are they going to be, uh, you know, lease-controlled or whatever? They, would they have to forever and ever and ever offer those units, those 10% units for affordable housing? That was a question also. And I think for the study for the impact, I think that what, she was saying Aquarian, there should be a water study impact as well for the 500 and something units. And also electrical, the electrical grid, that needs to be studied. What is the impact on that? Also the traffic. When the Hartford were here, were here, we had people coming. They would come across the mountain or come up 44, come up Route 10. And they were coming in, they were coming in the opposite direction of everybody else, right? We're all going out, but they're all coming in, which they probably have an easier drive than we all have going out. Now you're going to have another, let's see, 500 units. You're going to have houses for rent. So those houses are going to have two cars, plus maybe a teenager driving. So you could have upwards of 1,000 cars a day coming in and out there. And they're going to add to the same flow that we all have now. When we get out, we go up Route 10 or down Route 10, over 185 or over 144. So it's not like when the Hartford was there, we had the opposite flow. And those 600 cars were coming in, you know, and offsetting ours going out. So I just thought I'd mention that. Also, can we not ha- I, I think the best part of that property would be 1,200, 1,300 square foot ranch houses, two to three bedrooms on a slab, one-car garage, maybe offer two-car. You couldn't sell them fast enough. You, I could tell you how many people I probably know personally that would, uh, older couples that would just love to have a two-bedroom ranch. And they only have one car now. You know, they share a car because they're not both going to work anymore. But put that prefab home, she's right, a prefab home, 1,200, 1,300 square feet, maybe 100, 25 houses in there, have a park, have something the public can come to park. Ever, because the initial, she read the, the note on the initial and I printed that up. She's right. It doesn't mean apartments, four-story apartment buildings and, oh, let's just throw that commercial building in here because we need to check that mark, right? We're just going to throw that in there, you know, and, you know, we don't really need that many more apartments. We need houses, 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 houses. And you might have 100 kids in there, right? But they're all varying ages. You know, I don't think, I think it would have, uh, even less impact on the schools because you might sell a lot of those pieces of property, the 125 houses, to elderly that might want a two, two-bedroom ranch house. Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Gilbert. I live at Talkeet Acres, which is 126 Hot Meadow Street. And, and like Pat, I've like written and rewritten what I'm going to say. And I, I remember when I was speaking against, um, Vessel. And I said, "Right in my backyard, there's the Hartford Insurance Company." You know, "Bring something in our neighborhood." That would be, that would be fine. Little did I have any idea that it would be on such a tremendous scale. And, and so in my mind, I've been saying, okay, so something's going to go back there. And, uh, so my priority was to make sure that between our property and especially building number two and the Hartford property, that we would still have some vegetation in between. Unfortunately, where the berm is and the, the biggest trees is where they're going to put the houses. So it looks like they want to cut down the houses, uh, cut down the trees. Today, um, today I wrote a letter and I will give it to either George or Bruce, whoever needs it. And this is a letter about the, um, the master development landscaping plan. It's, it has similar features to what the letter was that I submitted for the previous meeting when I was, um, out of town. But I have 30 signatures from my condo complex. I went door to door and I got, I got signatures from my neighbors who are concerned about this property and how it's going to affect us and how we really need to have evergreen vegetation and berms between us to preserve our property and our property value. So I will give you, I've got copies, um, but I'll give this, uh, to whoever needs it. Bruce, I, I really liked what you said about the vibrancy that a multi-use would have. And like I said, I thought that this would be, uh, this was going to happen. Now I am so against it because of that stupid, I'm sorry, I take that word back. Because of that commercial building that is going to be put over along where the river, the brook is. Because that's not the intent of the multi-use. The multi-use is to bring people out and to nourish them. And I li-, I, I live very close to Cumberland Farms and somebody mentioned that yellow building. And that yellow building has been vacant all the time, 100% vacant. You put a commercial building back there where there are all these residents, I find that that would not be a good draw. And it would be much better suited to have a multi-use building in, in the mi-, in the middle with the residents out to the sides. That will bring people out. So that's another comment that I have. I totally agree with Jackie in, in getting the independent, um, reviews, uh, because, number one, the reviews that were great. I mean, I, I did, I saw them on TV, they're great. But we really need an independent, uh, an independent review. And maybe like once things really have gelled to the point where we're close to something, then to do the evaluation when we know what, how many residents we have. Um, and we need to know how that effect will be on the schools, fiscal, town services, traffic, water, electric, all those things. Because like somebody said in the previous meeting, it's like having a little Terrafill right there and we talk. I also have Diane Nash's letter. And, um, actually, it has been submitted to George.
We have that.
And so if everybody has that, then, then, um, I, I won't read it. Let me just see the berm. I think that's it.
No, and I'm not, I'm not telling you you can't read it. I'm just telling you, the commission members have it from distribution, George did.
Can I read it? All I can say is for the sake of the public, to know what is being done.
Okay. And that's what I emailed Diane is that I thought that it would be good for the, okay. So this is from Diane Nash, 5 Marywood, Simsbury, Connecticut. And this is, I'm, I'm reading her letter. "Sometimes I wonder why the public speaks. We have charrettes, surveys, public meetings, public audience, a P O C D that is meant to be aspirational for the town going forward. Yet we consistently need to demand a referendum to have the will of the people carried forward. Watch the town meeting of January 8th. Watch how the sense of the planning commissioners to what is the will of the public gets recrafted into words that say, 'This development plan with suggested modifications is consistent with the P O C D.' Why not say it is not consistent? Beginning with density, height, not mixed use, no chance of ownership, blocks the hillside, et cetera. Why? An overlay mixed use that was intent on a business enterprise component gets reshaped to a mixed use, meaning a mix of housing options. What the glimpse of the ridgeline atop a building is considered compliant? When economic development goals are met because high-density units produce more income than services demand? Do our words convey our meaning?" That was a question. "Is our, is our meaning distorted by the words supplied? When the present residents are dismissed or their options watered down because future residents are not considered, are we assuming that no present residents will remain? Maybe if developments like this get approved, they won't. Developers have staff, skilled presenters, fully-time legal, environmental personnel. We have mostly volunteers defending the town against its reshaping. We have a town code that allows for technical assistance for commissioners when they view large and complex projects. You must avail yourselves of this provision despite perhaps staff feeling it unnecessary. Section 85 dash 6 dot 1. Use all the resources available to modify this project till it represents what's best for Simsbury and reject it till it is." I like that. "Listening closely to the taped sessions of the planning commission and our planning commissioners' words that had the rejection of anything taller than three stories be disserious. It should have been stated in the P O C D. Why wasn't it? Is there, was there a memorandum of understanding between the town and the Silverman Group when they purchased the property from the Hartford to work with them to develop the property under the overlay zone? Does this tie the hands of our zoning commissioners? Does it influence the guidance received from our planning department? Or is this a standard ploy of a developer to present a plan exceeding all parameters and then compromise and reduce elevations, number of units, and then everyone accepts a project beyond what should be built but relieved that it's not as bad as the first proposed? Please, get the technical assistance for this large, complex property. Get an expert for Simsbury. Ensure that the development of this parcel enhances Simsbury's sense of place. Thank you." Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teriann Flanagan-Snedeker and I live at 2 Meadowbrook Road. I've lived in a lot of different towns and cities growing up. I've lived in Toronto, I've lived in Colorado, I've lived in Maryland. I've also lived in Connecticut and chose to come back to Connecticut and live in Simsbury. I love Simsbury, I love the downtown feel that we currently have here. I would hate to see it. I would hate to see the town not take the time that I think we really need. I do believe that we need to do, um, an independent third, um, an independent study, particularly on the, um, the traffic, the wetlands, the school. I don't know if we've done enough of our due diligence on that. And I am just asking you to take your time before you submit your answers on this. Thank you. Thank you.
If, if there's nobody else to speak, we'll move on here. We're going to close the public hearing at this point. It's not closing the public hearing, it's just closing the public audience for now.
For tonight.
So for, for right now. And we want to move back to the question ourselves of what next? It was suggested by the applicant's attorney that an extension to the next meeting would be in order. And I'm not sure if anybody has a reaction to that. Does it sound like, you know, in two weeks or two, three weeks, we'd be in some position that doesn't seem like enough time to make? Would that need more time than that?
Hey, make sure you guys are using your microphones so everybody can hear, please.
Doesn't seem like enough time to make.
Well, that would be an extension on the public hearing portion, which then we would close it instead of having to close tonight because we're due in two days to close, right? I'm just, I want to make sure I understand. They are asking for an extension so that more information and can be provided to us prior to us closing the public hearing, at which point we'll have all information that, that we're allowed to have. Then we have a portion of time to deliberate. So it's not like we would have to make a decision on it at the next meeting. It would just be extending the amount of time for them to provide additional information. Is that true, George?
That, that's correct. You would, so you've got thirty-five days with which to close the public hearing. You can take extensions. Once the public hearing is closed, then you have sixty-five days to render a decision.
And the-
And you can only extend a maximum of sixty-five additional days.
And the, if, the, the additional studies that Jackie mentions, can those occur during those sixty-five days that we have after? Or those have to be completed by the end of the public hearing?
So they need, they would need to be part, well, if, if you want to, if you want to rely them in terms, rely on them in terms of your decision-making process, they would have to be part of the public hearing process. It could not be submitted after the fact.
Because the applicant has to respond.
Yeah, they need to be part of the public record.
Right, so the applicant can respond to any studies?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, regarding studies, I would just make one more point, which is, yes, we, 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 those studies are permitted under the town code and how, and how we work. The timelines are going to be tight and you need to know that. You could be in a situation where those studies are not available and you'll be up against a decision-making timeline.
But just to remind us, what is the last date for this?
Well, we, we don't, we don't have a last date.
Consideration of this application, maximum last date.
So it's sixty-five days, sixty-five days from the close of the public hearing. And any remainder of time that is available for extension. So that, so that end date is an unknown date right this second.
But it can only move around.
So you close, so if you close the public hearing today, sixty-five days is you must make a decision.
Or can the public hearing be extended?
No more extensions.
With no more extensions, that's what I'm saying.
Sixty-five days.
Correct.
But the public hearing can be extended longer than two weeks?
No, it can be, it can be extended. You are permitted extensions no longer than sixty-five days for the entire process.
Okay.
Okay. So, so I'm trying to understand the timeline here. So, I mean, theoretically, there's going to be some changes made to this, this project if, if the applicant is, is smart and wants to have a good chance. Which means that, that we're going to have to consider any of those changes. We would want to do a study based on the changes being proposed to us. It doesn't seem like we have enough time to do that. In fact, I don't know that we have enough time. If we, if we said we wanted to do this study now, it would still have to go to the Board of Selectmen. It would take sixty days. And then we'd have to like, the day it came out, basically, we would have to try to, we'd have to close the public hearing and then render a decision.
Make sure, let's make sure everybody understands what that process is.
Okay.
So four studies, four independent studies. And we're permitted to, independent studies in the code.
Right.
Four independent studies would require draft scopes to be prepared, request for proposals or, or consultants, you know, several consultants to bid on, on each. The zoning commission would choose the selected consultant at a public meeting. That selected consultant and the fee would be taken to the Board of Selectmen for their approval of the fee essentially. And then the study would have to be done.
And all within sixty-five days?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And if there's a delay in the study process, potentially we end up sixty-five days and no studies in our hands and a lot of money committed to the process.
Correct. Well, let's be clear, under the code, the code allows us to bill the applicant for the independent study. So it would not necessarily be borne by the town.
Well, right. My point was just that the commitment is made.
Yeah.
The applicant can resubmit, correct?
Well, that's, I mean, there's, that's another point, Jackie. It's, an available strategy is to act on what we've got in front of us.
Right.
Ask yourself, how much difference would it make? The results of the studies? What if, what if we assumed everything the applicant has included in their submittals is accurate?
Okay.
I'll take it further. The applicant has also heard a lot of feedback tonight.
Right.
And like Tucker said, a lot from us. So if there were changes to be made, that's something to consider as well.
That'd be a great thing, probably, but you have to. We've been doing this a long time. We've had several opportunities for public input. We're not really hearing dramatically different information. I'm glad they give people the opportunity to, you know, let everyone else know what they're thinking. Great, great input, but between now and months ago, too much. We can really hear a lot of different information. I don't know, I heard it suggested by somebody who did it, but I've heard it and so.
Well, this is the first time we've had a change from the applicant, was tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. So George, what do we do? What's, what's the best work? That's the right thing to-
It's a chance to decide what to do.
Yeah.
So-
If you need more information.
So-
Correct, we need more information.
Like what?
Um, so I guess my thought is the planning, they went before the planning commission and the planning commission outlined some very real points. And in a fairly short order, they came back with some modifications based on those very concrete points. And I don't think that we've done them the justice of giving them the concrete points that we want to see in order to, so should, do I wish that they had come back with a more feasible, better project based on all this comments? Sure. But this is the public and we're the ones that are able to direct them. And I'm not sure that I feel like we've done that. And so I think that it wouldn't really be reasonable to just close it out now, seeing that they've been willing to make some progress without telling them what we want to see from them in very clear terms and finding out from them if that's something that they're willing to do or not within the parameters of the, the form-based code that they're supposed to be operating under. So I guess my thought is we should probably talk about what we want to see, put forth a reasonable extension in order for those things to be achieved. They'll be able to tell us whether it's achievable or not and then we would make a decision. I don't, I don't know. That, that to me makes sense.
I think that that makes total sense. I just think it's worth noting that, again, we've had multiple meetings over and over and the same things have been said. And tonight, what we got back reflected very little of that.
Well-
Just a point.
I, I think there's plenty that we could give them that they'd be able to come back with. I, I definitely agree with you. Okay. Do, do we want to talk a bit about some of the things we're, we're hoping to, to see while, while we're here?
Well, do we want to, do we want to make a decision on the extension? Or do we want, well, I, I don't know, what, what in order do we think?
Yeah.
What order do we think is best? Do we make a decision on the extension? Do we discuss the things? And do you have a suggestion on that, George? Whether we would, or is that just still on us?
I, I mean, I, I, I think what would serve you best is, is articulating specifically the changes or modifications that you would, that this body would recommend individually or as a whole to improve, to, to improve the application. It's not a suggestion that the changes you, you, that you would request guarantee success or approval. It's just, you've, you've got to articulate items that the applicant can respond to.
Yep.
Whether it's, whether it's height or additional commercial or-
So do we need to keep the public hearing open in order to do that?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So then we need that motion.
To-
Well, so you don't, you don't need to do that yet. I, I don't think you need to do that yet. I mean, I would have this conversation about, about what points of, of the applicant's proposal would you recommend change or modification to?
You recommending that conversation this evening?
I'd like, I'd like to-
I would recommend that. I, I, I do. I, I would, I would certainly recommend that. I don't, yes. Otherwise, the applicant can come back with a response.
Right, right.
So, I mean, just to kick it off, I think we want three or less stories on the buildings. I think that that's been a common thing. It's supported by our planning commission and I think that that is something that we would want to see.
Mm-hmm.
I think that there was a lot of talk about mixed use. And I think that we need to further define what we think that means in today's context. So is it, I mean, we want, if they put a commercial building, do we want to see that commercial building more integrated with the other units? Do we want to see, do we suggest that we would like to see a first-story commercial with a second-floor units? Like, you know, I'm looking for feedback from everybody else on, on what we really think makes that vibrant community because I think we need to spell it out.
Yeah. I, if, if I can take from there, I think having, if there's an opportunity to have more commercial, it would be under the residential units. And I think that it is not unreasonable to ask that things be three stories. If we, if, if they were to take some of those units that they're losing and chop those, those single families up into missing-middle types of units, which are typically associated with, like, walkable communities, are associated with these kind of mixed-use developments. I think those single-family homes are really, really, are a self-imposed restriction and it, and they're going to force them to build up on some of the other stuff. And I think that's, I don't think that's a good idea. Bring, bring the units down, chop, chop some of the single families up into, to other stuff so that you're not, you know, taking a massive hit on, on all your units. And, and look for those commercials, commercial opportunities under, I mean, that's what, that's the classic mixed use. I mean, that's what, like, it was mentioned, like, a little Terrafill. Should, we should be so lucky. As someone from Terrafill, my, you know, my favorite restaurant has a little apartment building right above it. That's a great, it's a great spot. It's part of the charm of my community and it could be part of the charm of this community.
I mean, my biggest concern is just the number of units. I mean, even if you go from five hundred eighty to closer to five hundred, it's still a huge project, which I can't support that many units.
Agreed.
I'm not sure at what point it becomes financially unfeasible for the Silverman Group to continue with the project. They need to tell us that. I think we need a lot fewer units than what they're proposing. I commend them for, I disagree a bit with you, Tucker, on the single-family houses. I commend the Silverman Group for coming up with a proposal that includes apartments, duplexes, and single-family homes. I think, I think it's a great idea to have that flexibility. Also, I would agree with the planning commission that we would like to see an opportunity for ownership of this, of this site. And that's a very important element for me.
I, I just think, even if we wanted, if we want that ownership, I think it's easier to achieve ownership in, in duplex. Like, I think the single-family home has been the, the homeownership model for so long. But I, maybe I'm, because of my age, but-
Even the, the condos or even the apartments could be owned. I mean, you have condos that are really apartments.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You don't have to, those have to be a single-family house.
Right, right.
First-time home, prefers to have a small home.
Yeah.
Or maybe senior to go there.
Yeah.
So there is absolutely a need. So I'm going to agree with Tony.
Yeah.
I think we definitely need that single-family housing component. We need more of it than this. I also agree with Tony, this is way too dense. Five eighty is too dense, five oh eight is too dense. Please knock that down. Please give us more individual, single-family homes. Some of these buildings, this is way too dense. Make some of those duplexes to what Tucker said. The view, the view, the view has been said by everybody. These buildings cannot be here. I've asked that before, I asked that months ago. You cannot block this view. We, it's, it's just been overstated and I haven't seen any changes in the plans. So we need to have the view shed back here. We need to be good stewards of this.
Yeah. Well, bringing them down a level is, is, is fine. I just, and again, I mean, I-
Just, no.
What do you mean?
Not three-story buildings that are blocking the view.
I don't think the three stories block the view as, as thing here.
What you're actually interested in is the visual, what the view is, the view shed.
Yeah.
And I'm, and so trying to stipulate how tall the buildings can be, well, it depends on where they are on the lot.
Yeah.
If you put four-story buildings back by the river, most people drove by when the Hartford was there and it was four stories. You couldn't see it.
We don't need a three-story or four-story buildings.
Well, my point is that the concern about the view shed and the tall buildings is remedied if the tall buildings at some reasonable height, a maximum height, are in the area where the river, you know, in the back part of the property. But I'm, I'm, my own concern is that I don't think the visual study that was presented to us is, is anywhere near adequate to make a compelling case that all has been done to preserve or enhance the visual of the mountain. And I think there's been a misunderstanding there because I think there've been made a vigorous effort, a fairly vigorous, to preserve the look of the ridgeline, which is the peak along Talcott Mountain. It doesn't give adequate consideration to the concern for the larger view, which is the hillside. And so I think we need to have a more thoughtful visual evaluation and study of the preservation that's, that's needed given the value to the community of that, that scenery and the opportunity when driving by to see it and when living there to walk outside and see it. And as one of the people who wrote to us said in her letter, Canal Place resident, that when she drives out her driveway in the morning and sees the view of that mountain, that's, that's it for her. But I'm not convinced that, that view is going to be available to her if that project gets built the way it's been drafted.
I mean, the, the people behind Canal Place were probably pretty upset when that got built because they lost their view. At some point, buildings block site.
They're among the many people that over the years here, we've never had the negative feedback on a project in Simsbury, to my knowledge, that we've had on that north side. People hate that north side, what's been done there. I know the Silvermans feel like they did their best work or something like that, but people who, you know, and a lot of them came to these meetings and said as much, they don't like what got done in, in the north side. And to use that as the benchmark for the design and the density and all that other stuff for the south side is just sort of, you know, it's not making things better. It's not a constructive path. So that's a problem. But I think also, one of the things that, I guess I, I made my point, to move the larger buildings to the rear. I heard that said when the north side was being considered for development. The people from the, from the condo, not Talcott Acres, the one on the north side, said they, they couldn't understand why the large buildings weren't on the other side of the campus rather than right by them. The large building being the, the one, the hundred-and-ten-bed facility that Silverman doesn't own. But if that building and its, its bulk was over on the other side, they would have been happier, but it's, it's where it is. But on the other side, we backed up to the, to the wet area of Minister Brook. So, yeah, that we heard from some of those folks again.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for my alarm going off, but I did set it because we do have a hard and fast rule with this zoning provision in the bylaws. To continue business past ten P M., you have to have a two-thirds vote to continue. So I would suggest you get a motion to continue past ten P M. So I would suggest you get a motion to continue past 10:00 PM.
I'm motioned to continue our meeting past 10:00.
Thank you, Shannon.
Is that good?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the motion passes and we'll continue our discussion for a longer period past 10 o'clock.
One thing, one thing that I'd like to note is that if we were in fact dealing with a reduction in size of the number of units and a reduction as far as like height, a lot of the studies that we wanted to have for independent studies would no longer be needed. We could actually use what we have. So any extension that we had as far as the public hearing is concerned would be to allow for further public comment on what the commissioners have said as well as the applicant being able to respond. And we would therefore not have to deal with further expenditure, which I would also note would not likely be positively reviewed by the Board of Selectmen, given what our tax situation is these days.
Well, he did say that it was covered by the, whatever the parameters of that are, but the...
Regardless, the point is that the independent studies would not be as necessary if we were dealing with a reduction.
Yeah.
Of course. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so I have, we still haven't addressed transportation. And transportation is a big issue within Simsbury in and of itself. And to, I would like to see what the applicant, what their thoughts on helping with transportation because transportation will make these units more accessible. And to people with various needs, they could be physical, they could be economical, they could be what have you. In addition to that, I would like, I'd be interested to learn more from the applicant about single-family homes having, you know, meeting those sort of accessibility goals of one-floor, first-floor living for senior citizens, for people with physical disabilities. I think that's it.
Okay, then I want to roll back a little bit on the issue of affordable housing. The proposal commits to identifying 10% as the affordable housing figure. But I think we're all aware that, you know, we're having increasing issues with 8-30G. We're, we're in fact losing control of zoning in Simsbury. And so, like our neighbors over in Canton, I've raised this before, but we need to get busy on an inclusionary zoning requirement. The P O C D is in the, you know, in the January one. I didn't look at 2017. It's, it's suggesting a 10% to 20% required commitment to affordable housing. And the 10% to 20% is not going to be, you know, create the entitlement to avoid zoning regulations in Simsbury. But my point is, as someone already stated, I want to, I think our first speaker, a 10% commitment by everybody who builds a development from now till doomsday is not going to account for the 500 that we don't. We're short now. We're missing by 500, which is roughly half of what we're requiring. It's the suggested goal. But 10%, 10%, 10% is going to do nothing for the 500. So it's going to have to be higher than 10%.
Agreed.
And so we need to have some sort of further consideration of that issue and, you know...
Do you want a request?
What do you mean, request?
Oh, do you want to remember?
Like 20%?
20%.
We're, we're making a record of the concerns that we have.
Yeah.
And we'll deliver that and they can make a response.
What are you putting out there? Tonight?
Because we're not stopping the meeting, Jackie, to inquire and debate every one of these with the people sitting here.
I, I think by saying that, he has put that out there.
Okay, okay.
Target is more than 10%.
More than, than 10% heading into 20%.
Well, yeah.
And you have to remember that when the north side was done, they declined to make a commitment to affordable housing. It's zero on the 300 occupied apartments on the north side, zero. At roughly the same time, Aspen Green was built a little further down the road, close to the Yvonne Town Line. And they made a 10% commitment voluntarily. And it's, it's, well, I don't hear any complaints about it. It's working. But again, 10% is not going to speak to the 500 units that we're short. So it's got to be higher than that.
I, I think 20% is, for, for the market, the way it is in Simsbury with such high demand, I think that's perfectly reasonable. I, I would also say though, if we're trying to maximize the town's return on investment, that, that 20% means we don't want to start slashing, like, that's, that's, when we start slashing the size of, well, okay, we is, is the wrong word there, but to be clear, my old hobby horse of the, the single-family buildings not being as necessary, if we're, if we're getting more, if we're getting 20% affordability, then saying, but it also has to be spread out through very few units that are all single-family, we're not, we're talking 830G, we're not doing...
And it's still, it's still a percentage, right?
It is still a percentage.
So you build more, you get more, but your percentage doesn't change. You do get more affordable housing, but you get more...
Right, but the base keeps rising.
Yeah, I was going to say that...
It doesn't really...
I was a D student in math, but I, I do think if it is more, I think we get it.
Percentage is just percentage.
We wouldn't try to mislead you, Tucker. 10% doesn't ever account for the 500.
Different question. For the neighbors at 126 Hot Meadow, those are the direct neighbor and they have, you know, that they'd like a buffer, landscaping, berm, mature trees. Could staff, the applicant, meet with the owners of 126 Hot Meadow the same way that the applicant met with Riverwalk when this was going on on the other side?
If, if I could just offer one thing on that, this is, this is a master plan. And so I think the direction from the commission, if you get to that point, would be a, a condition that require a berm. But that berm and the technical aspects of that berm are going to be deciding if you review a site plan on this application, where you will have the specific plan that's...
The site plan that was submitted in a previous presentation, the applicant pointed out that that area that is, has a berm in it now needs to be flattened for where the houses are going to be.
Right.
And the trees are going to be cut down and they will plant smaller trees. That's what they said. So, you know, it's not an unknown concern.
That's why I made your point.
Yeah. But I think we need to be a little bit cautious about where we have legal entitlement and where we don't. And my, my point is more along the lines of, we need to, I'm not saying we shouldn't deal with it, but we need to be focused on the big issues because if, there are certain drop-dead issues, there's some combination that are drop-dead issues, I, I think. And...
Let me just give you that.
What is it?
This is, this is the letter that I referred to that has 30 signatures, but it also is, it's in...
Give it to George. We can't take that right now because we're not a... Give it to George.
Yeah. Okay. I, I'd like to say just personally, I think if we're going to ask them to cut units...
No, Mike, I guess what I was starting to say is, we need to kind of stick with the big ones and know that if, if three or four big ones, if they feel like they don't have any flexibility, they're not going to make a move. Then we don't want to spend a lot of time on smaller issues that could be dealt with down the road. Because a certain number of the things that we're interested in would come up in the next stage. But if there is no next stage, we don't have to, you know, be as concerned. And I think George was trying to say that earlier, but anyway.
Yeah, sure, Doug.
Yeah, so it's my opinion is if we're going to be asking them to cut units, we should be asking them to cut for a commercial space. I don't think, you know, we, we want affordable housing. Cutting stuff from higher density to lower density, we're just, you're using the same amount of land to get less units. That's just inherently less affordable.
It also defeats the purpose of having a mixed-use, like, form-based code in the area. I mean, mixed-use areas are meant to be denser than, than non-mixed-use areas, right? That's like, you know, they have, that's why, that's why I ask so many questions about the single-family homes because it seems to me that it almost defeats the purpose of what we're going for in the area. And, and you're right, if we're, if we're cutting down on units, I think, you're right. If it's for a commercial, then that gives us a lot of benefits. Because remember, like, when we're talking about how many people are on this lot exactly, what, the costs associated with people come in very specific ways, right? Comes in terms of the increases in traffic, comes in terms of the increases in, in school attendance and what have you. But if there are fewer single-family homes, that's going to have an effect on that school attendance, right? If, if we're not mandating, if we're not mandating as much parking or there's more commercial space, that's fewer cars or that, you know, fewer car owners in there, right? Like, I, I think that focusing too much on like the amount of people and the amount of units is less of, is less productive for us than talking about kind of the, the land use in there and the, and the use of the space. So if, if, if we're cutting down units, I want it, I, I would like to see it in a way that says, "We're cutting units because we want the commercial there instead," or "We're making it lower to protect the view shed." I don't know that I want to transfer multifamily to single-family when there's a lot of single-family options in Simsbury already. But there are not as many multifamily options.
Also, when talking about like the height of the building, you can talk about stories and that equates to numbers of people, which is a concern. However, there's also height of building, the way that they have the buildings designed with like an entire extra story on the roof of the building that's serving no purpose except that there's the perception that in Simsbury, we want a pitched roof on our buildings. And I don't know that you're necessarily needing that. Like, it, sometimes it becomes a, you know, you're, you're fighting your view for an aesthetic on the building that doesn't actually necessarily make the building more quaint. There's many, many flat-roofed buildings that are beautiful. There's many historic examples of a flat-roofed building. And I think, you know, talking about stories and height are two separate things that both need to be considered in terms of like what the balance is and they both impact the view.
Agreed.
So we can bring the buildings down right off the bat.
Right.
And we can talk about eliminating stories.
Yeah.
Well, we need to just make sure everybody's on the same understanding level in that height isn't a measure of ground to top of roof.
Yeah.
Height is a measure partly up. And so if you, we deal, if we're dealing with gable roofs, when it says, you know, it's 55 feet high, that's not to the top. That's just halfway up the gable plus the distance from the ground to the, to the eaves. And so when we say the building is 50 feet height, high, given our regulations and how we define height, the fact is that building's over 60 feet, could be 65 feet, but it's not 55 feet. It's something more. So I hear what you're saying, Kate. I'm all for a conversation about it. I don't know the answer, but flat roofs everywhere.
I'm not saying flat roofs everywhere because you've got all these residential, at least smaller scaled buildings that are, have a pitched roof and are cute little colonial Cape Cod, whatever. But if you look at any downtown, exactly what is a mixed-use thing where you've got buildings, you know, shops below or whatever, coffee, whatever things. And as you go up, if you look at any like historic village, they have flat roofs. It's not, because that's just how a, a large, like, that's how large row buildings, like, they're trying to replicate, are actually built in the real world and have been for centuries. It's just, I mean, that is how it's built. And so I'm just saying, if we were talking about preserving ridge lines, and I, I, I mentioned this to them back when I was on the design review board as well, when you're talking about preserving the views, having superfluous architectural detail doesn't preserve the view.
Well said.
Two quick comments. One is, I've spent most of my 61 years in the state of Connecticut. I remember 1978 when we used to have the thing called the Civic Center and there was a flat roof and it collapsed. That is a concern. And that's one of the reasons why I think folks are interested in having pitched roofs because when you have pitched roofs, you don't have the snow load necessarily concentrated in one particular area that could then cause a structural failure. The second thing that I would like to note is that it seems...
David, bear in mind though, the Civic Center, it still has a flat roof.
Yeah.
They built another flat roof.
I'm aware of that. I wasn't thinking that they did a whole lot of good by the replacement either, but that's neither here nor there. The second point is, I think from what it sounds like, in order to allow for the applicant to make a response to the comments that have been made, it is likely that we would need to have an extension of, of the public hearing at the very least to the next hearing date. It's possible that we would need to extend it beyond that if there is further back and forth. But as I'm not seated as a commis, full commissioner tonight, I can't make the motion, but I would recommend that we move to extend the public hearing at the very least to the next hearing.
Yeah. I, I don't think we're going to be able to give them specifics, but at least I think we can give them some intent, maybe. So intent being the preservation of that ridge line. If they, I guess if they can do it with a pitched roof, great, but we're willing to say...
Yeah, or a variety of types.
But wait a minute, wait a minute. That's the point I was trying to make, not even 10 minutes ago. The ridge line is not the goal. The goal is the view. The view has the hillside all the way down to the farmer's fields over there, although I know you can't see through the trees and across the river. But it's the hillside. It's the top. It's Talkeet Mountain and a cubeline tower.
They're making them, what's the perpendicular? No, what, the opposite perpendicular to the road? I think that's, that's one of the attempts they're making to...
They're making a perpendicular to the road.
Is it perpendicular? Okay. Like I said, I was a D student in math. I don't...
I just want to go back. I, I, I'm still not clear on how long we can extend the public hearing. They suggested we can extend it beyond February 3rd. Is that correct? That is correct. Okay.
Agreement. I think we have to have a... We have to have agreement on the extension, correct? Like, they have to approve the extension.
So the applicant has offered an extension through February 5th, which is your next meeting.
Well, actually, when I pressed counsel for a date, he said February 5th. That, that isn't necessarily all that they would do. That was a spur-of-the-moment response to, you know. So if we don't feel like February 5th is likely to be adequate, we might as well push this date out further and plan more realistically.
Yes, I agree.
So the one after that...
It's the 19th.
It's the 19th.
21st.
No, it's the 21st.
I, I think we have a maximum of 65 days, right? Whether it's be an extension to the public hearing or an extension to our deliberation. I think we should just extend it till the next meeting. If we have to extend it again, then we can decide that at that point. Because we have a maximum of 65. We don't want to spend a whole bunch of it and then potentially wind up needing it and not having it.
I agree.
But after the, that point in time, we don't have any more information to be received. So the decision should be fairly forthcoming, but we would give ourselves more time to receive information? I don't know, but I guess, I'm not against your approach.
We should, but I would rather have the time and not need it than need it and not have it.
But what we're not going to have any, any chance of is, is more studies. We're not going to have studies three weeks from today. We're not going to have studies six weeks from today.
Which is why I made the point of if we were dealing with a reduction, we wouldn't need additional studies. We would, we would just be considering further information in the back and forth between the applicant and the commission.
Okay. So, so we've said protect the, the view shed, including the hill, reduction in units. I guess we kind of disagreed on whether or not they should prioritize, uh, single-family or multifamily. But an, an increase in the commercial integration with the residential space, I think, seems to be relatively, okay.
Well, I think that's what calls, that's short of what my concern is. My concern is, this is supposed to be a mixed-use development.
Right.
I feel like one building labeled "commercial," I don't care what's in there, that's not going to achieve, you know, vibrancy for a 100, 125-acre development. That's not enough.
Right.
So that's just one building.
Yeah.
And agonizing over what goes in it is really, you know, a little bit short of the big issues.
And, and a way for them to...
A much bigger commitment to mixed use than 127,000 square foot building.
Right. Potentially in the form of... Potentially in the form of commercial on the bottom, residential on top, theoretically.
Well, that could be, but bear in mind, in twenty-eleven, we created a zoning set of regulations for the center of town to enable that kind of thing. And it's, there's no takers. No one has done. So, um, that, that may be not a reason not to push it on, on this site. It's, it's, you know, more than a decade later, but it's not a simple-
Right. And, and all of this, to be clear, is, is things that are more likely to gain favor from the commission are not guarantees of, right?
Yeah, the other thing is more than ten percent affordable housing.
Yeah. And up twenty percent doesn't seem unreasonable to me personally.
George, can you go over the, the, um, audio of this meeting tomorrow or somebody and get the items off the audio? Just put them in a list and-
Yeah, go over them.
I mean, I have a list here.
I've gotten pretty good notes. I think the app has taken pretty good notes.
Yeah.
I think it's been pretty clear, your, um, your guidance.
Can I add one more thing?
Crystal clear to me, but-
I mean, we're gonna do this tomorrow as well.
If we're gonna do what?
Well, I'll do the, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll prepare me the minutes tomorrow as well.
Oh.
Can I add one more thing? Also, um, because I've heard this, um, a number of times, to add to the vibrancy and the community feel of this, of this location, we should be so lucky, like Tucker said, to have it be like Terrafill and to have there be a, a Village Green and to have a, a common place where, um, people can go to have their cup of coffee and sit and chat with their neighbors.
I'm a hundred percent behind you, Shannon, on that.
Well, thank you.
But one of the things they have in Terrafill that we don't have elsewhere that I know is the Terrafill Village Association, T V A. Have you considered the timeline of that organization and the changes that have occurred in Terrafill, you know?
I think that, that is-
It's not a surprise, it's the T V A.
That can be part of how they run this vibrant community if they choose, if Silvermaner chooses to, to really take this and want to do something better with it. That can be something that they think about. It's like how that becomes a community and that can be something that they present. And, um, to that end, I would like to see a little bit more, I realize that you guys just put together the commercial piece of it, but, um, I would like to see a little bit more thought into that. Ran into this on the last go-around on the north side as well, where it's sort of like becomes this thing and it's like, well, what is it? It's whatever it wants to be and then it wants to be nothing because like it's not prescriptive enough to, like, to a cause. And when a business comes in, they're like, well, I don't know, I can't like see myself in it because it just doesn't like sell um, itself as like the thing that it could be. So, I would love to see a little bit more thought into like what it really could be like. I'd love to see, uh, a rendering that actually has like a sign somewhere. So, someone could imagine their business and like what does it look like when they walk up to their business there, um, just to kinda help people want. You know, so however you guys integrate that in, I'd like it to see it look like what it's supposed to be and not like a big blank canvas.
Yeah, microbrews are big right now, maybe, you know.
I don't know, what about like a golf, a golf bar? Come on, like, there's so many things that something can be, but like, and I'm not saying you have to make up what the tenants are gonna be, I realize you don't have them. But like, a little bit more sense of place to like what that commercial looks like, I think would go a long way in making tenants want it to covet that space.
Okay. Probably not the last word, but is that enough guidance?
Yeah, did you get all that?
I mean, it is customary, you know, to, to ask the applicant, I would ask the applicant if he, if he had any additional comments, uh, in response to you.
Mr. Chairman, we appreciate the comments of the commission and the audience. And, uh, we'll be here February fifth and we'll be talking to George every day.
Then February fifth will remain the day.
I think that's going, I'd like to-
I think we need to make a motion to continue the hearing.
Somebody wanna make a motion that we continue the public hearing until February fifth?
Move that we continue the public hearing until February fifth?
I second.
Tucker?
I second.
It'll be, uh, yeah, this room is, is library.
Right. Okay, and, uh, so it'd be seven PM on the fifth. And, uh, any, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. It's, uh, the date is February fifth, seven o'clock.
Wanna motion for adjourned?
Uh, are we done? Have we had enough fun?
I'll make a motion for adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
In a second.
Tony's second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Most she passes, we're adjourned.